Mrs. Van Heitzen, can I have a roll call of the board?
Anderson?
I am here.
Mrs. Beer?
I am here.
Mr. Briggs?
Here.
Mr. Brinker?
Here.
Mr. Cardamon?
Here.
Ms. Sainz?
Here.
And Mrs. Van Heitzen is here.
Thank you very much. So the entire board is here. Mrs. Fitzpatrick, would you like to introduce your team? And then we'll go right into the return to school plan.
Absolutely. So tonight on the call, we have several of our district administrators and they will introduce themselves as their portion of the presentation comes up tonight and clarify their role for everyone on the call. But as always, we are backed by Jason Smith from our technology department assisting us with the virtual meeting. My assistant, Paula Sutterfield, also hosting and helping us with the presentation, as well as our cabinet members, Mr. Walensky from HR and Student Services, Ms. Olson from Instruction and Curriculum, and Ms. Bella from Finance and Operations, and then several other members of our administrative team that we will do throughout the presentation. So with that, if we could introduce the presentation on the screen for everyone and we'll go ahead and get started.
One moment, just trying to find present.
Right next to share. The yellow button, share.
Oh, you know what? It's being blocked by my... Being blocked by all the attendees.
Okay.
Oh, and it's telling me I don't have a link. Um, one moment. Can you see that?
Yep. Are you making it as a whole slide or just like that?
I believe that's all I can do for...
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. This is a plan that's been several weeks and months in the making. As you know, we're presenting tonight a culmination of information that we've been working on as a district in response to the COVID-19 virus and its impact on our schools. We have several administrators and I'm very proud to say over 180 staff members from across the district, in addition to our district-level leaders and administrators who have worked on this plan. We had over 2,000 responses to our parent surveys, in addition to hundreds that filled out questions ahead of time, and we appreciate that. Tonight's presentation is an attempt to hit all facets of our district's learning plan across facilities and maintenance. We had several questions about how we would safely return to school and then what does our instruction look like? What tools will we use and what will we equip our teachers and families with as we launch into the 2021 school year? This is a fluid process. We understand that conditions in our society are changing all the time and we're getting new direction and new information each day from our professional organizations, our healthcare professionals at the CDC, the state and county health departments, as well as the Michigan Department of Education. This process has been thorough, but we do expect there will be additional questions and concerns. Tonight's process will be that each of our administrators will present a portion of the presentation and at any time after their, after each of their sections, I would ask that the board members then, we will several times call for questions from you because I'm sure there will be many as we go through this. We also know that the My Safe Schools, the Michigan Return to School Roadmap, was our basic guide for this. Several dozen pages of information regarding protocols and steps that we need to take that are required and some that are highly recommended. And it's also dependent upon the phasing that the state puts us in in our region at any given time, but especially as we start school. So tonight we will present our main recommendations to you, as well as some of the thought processes that went in to those committee meetings. And you will very quickly see and hear how complex these decision-making processes have been and how much thought and time has gone into it. But again, we understand this is fluid and that we may make different recommendations and we also may hear different things and get different direction from the state. Next slide. So tonight, we're going to start with the curriculum and instruction team led by Ms. Olson. She has several members of her team that will talk across the main ways that we're going to organize ourselves this evening. And eventually, we will get into all of the facilities, cleaning protocols, as well as the impacts all of this has on our staff members and how we will communicate these plans out to our staff and families. So I'll introduce Ms. Sarah Olson to start with the instruction and back to school.
Hi. Hi. Thank you very much. We are still trying to get ahold of some of our team members to get them on as panelists. And while we're doing that, I'll introduce this slide. We had so many people, as Mrs. Fitzpatrick pointed out, we had so many people helping us out and building, building plans and recommendations and researching best practice in all of these areas. I'll start by saying that we, for the instruction team, we are broken up into teams, as she said. For the instruction team, it was pretty large and we used the roadmap that was published by the state and used everything that was included in there to break down our work into workable pieces. And we ended up creating additional sub-task forces to really get at what was needed. And for the past several weeks, we've had, since the roadmap was published, we've had, gosh, I think we had, I mean, many, many teachers and administrators working on these teams. It was, I counted a little, a group the other day, it was 18 elementary teachers, 16 middle school, 15 high school. And that's just on this team. And as Mrs. Fitzpatrick pointed out, there were many more working on these things. So tonight, this is a look at the sub-task forces that have been working separately and then coming together. We were, I mean, groups were meeting, some of these groups, we were meeting daily, breaking out, coming back, breaking out, coming back to share our work across the task forces so that we were creating cohesive plans and not creating one idea that might not work at one level or in one place and it didn't work in another place. So a lot of meetings went into this. Let me tell you what they are. Curriculum, of course, from the state roadmap went into scope and sequence, curriculum delivery, what kind of curriculum. It's important to point out right now that the focus since spring has been for this fall to have robust and rigorous standards and units and lessons presented and not to feel that we are in the position that we were in last spring when, you know, obviously, people were not real prepared in March to deliver units and lessons the way, the way they did. So our main goal for this was to have rigorous content and standards and even assessment. We'll get into that. I will say, you see the word delivery models there. You will see that one of the key pieces that this team worked on, that people want answers to and want information about is delivery models. And that is what the school day looks like, what the week looks like, what the hours look like. So we have some great slides on that for you. A couple of different recommendations, no final recommendations, but a couple of different ideas. We narrowed it down. The next item is learning management systems. Learning management systems, we started exploring last spring, our online platforms that we expect to use whether we are in-person school or whether we are doing remote learning because we all feel that at any time, you know, we could not be in person. So we need to be prepared this time. So we were choosing learning management systems. Those are online platforms that teachers and students will use whether we're in person or at home so that it's more seamless in case we are not in in-person instruction at any point. Virtual Academy is separate from a learning management system. That's an entire other model. We'll get into that. But that's about families having an option to choose something that is entirely remote and tell the district in the next few weeks, maybe they're not comfortable coming back for in-person instruction. Professional development is important across all areas, all areas of new ways of learning and new, new tools and resources to use. Assessment, that was another piece that we, we thought was a key piece in the spring. So we have information on that. And technology, of course, and that technology is about devices and capacity and things like that. So next slide. Now, this next slide was going to be delivered, and I don't know if she's on, by Marcy Dryden. Did she make it on? As a panelist? If not, we'll work around it.
I am here.
Oh, there you are. Thank you.
Oh. I made it.
All right. So, yeah, Marcy, tell them we broke up, we further broke up team into levels. So go ahead.
Yeah. So hello, everyone. I'm Marcy Dryden. I'm the principal at Keller Elementary. Jennifer Nipper, the principal at Northwood, and I were the co-chairs of the Curriculum Task Force. And along with many teachers from across the district, from all grade levels, we developed two possible plans or schedules to be considered for elementary. And we are, we did break up in our groups with elementary, middle school, and high school. So they're, after my plan and considerations that we're talking about, then the middle school and the high school will share theirs. So keeping in mind the safety guidelines of our roadmap and social distancing, as well as wearing masks, our first choice is an A-B group plan. This would be in-person and virtual instruction for all students. So we'd have two days on and three days virtual. And what that would look like is so when our groups are being put together, we will keep in mind the families that have multiple students in a building. So we will keep them grouped by alphabetical order. Students in the second group, or I'm sorry, students in two groups, so Cohort A will attend in person Monday and Wednesday, and the Cohort B will attend in person on Tuesday and Thursday. All students will be remote learners on Friday. The teacher's responsibility for asynchronous, which is their independent work, and their synchronous learning, which is live instruction on the virtual days. Friday would be used for staff development, staff development or professional learning and an extra deep cleaning. There will be no late starts with our PD on that, since we have PD on the Friday. So our second choice, next slide, is a four-day, all DK through five students and one virtual day. So what that will look like is the focus on in-person instruction for every student. Students stay put and the teachers will rotate into the classrooms. One day a week will be off-campus for virtual asynchronous instruction. The two, the off-campus day would be used for staff professional development, once again, and a deep cleaning. This would also allow for students to engage in being a remote learner, which we know is pretty important. This also, since we'd have the professional development on one of the days, we would not have those late start Wednesdays anymore. The caveat here, based on our Virtual Academy numbers, we may, this might be the plan. So that's all I have for my slides.
Are there questions from the board on the two elementary options so far or what their thinking was regarding some of these recommendations?
This, this is Mrs. Van Heitzen. Just a question, what, Mrs. Dryden, based on the last comment that you made, the caveat based on the numbers and the role of Virtual Academy? And also, what is the anticipated number of students in each classroom?
So this would put our numbers at possibly 13 per class, because if our numbers are 26, so even if we went up to 30, that would put us at 15 students in a classroom. And then, since we still do not have those numbers for our Virtual Academy, there could be a possibility that there will not be a need for an A-B schedule if the numbers are low.
So just as a clarification, I'm sorry, just as a clarification, the more kids that went into the Virtual Academy, the less that would be in the regular classroom and the social distancing protocols could be met just with the makeup of the regular class.
Correct. Thank you.
This is Ms. Debbie Anderson. So my question is, when will parents need to decide about the Virtual Academy or in-person or Plan A or Plan B?
That the Virtual Academy invitation will go out this week and I think that there's no deadline on it yet. We will, but I'm going to say it's going to be in the next couple of weeks. But we thought parents would need more information about this planning in order to make an informed decision.
Thank you.
So. Question on the A-B plan. So the two-days, three-days splits, so Cohort A would go to school for three days and then three-day, I'm sorry, go to school for two days and then would have three days of virtual learning. Cohort B would have the same but on alternate days. Is the population, is the population of the school on any given day reduced?
Based on this plan, it would be reduced in, in half.
Okay.
Some of the things that we would consider, but it not make as much of an impact is what Mrs. Flaherty Graham is going to talk about in her slides with special ed.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. So on, on the second-choice plan, all the students would be in the classes four days a week. Is that right?
Correct.
So if it was a class of 26, there might be 26 kids in, in that one classroom or?
There is a possibility.
This, this is Mrs. Van Heitzen. So I have a question, though. So it seems like we would have to provide, and again, parents are learning, as we're learning as well today. But it seems that there would have to be a date certain for the Virtual Academy deadline because that could also impact people's decisions. So some, I'm assuming some parents have made that decision that they don't want their children to be in the classroom because of, they're not comfortable yet. And how does that virtual curriculum and instruction align with the, the in-person?
We have slides further down on the Virtual Academy. It's its own separate topic. Do you want us to do that now or do you want us to go ahead?
Now, Ms. Olson, if you don't mind, I'm going to answer that quick a little bit here, too. The first choice automatically limits the number of students to 50% in every class, which provides for greater social distancing. The protocols that we're receiving from the state are guidance around a six-foot social distancing, if possible. But we also know that by limiting the number of contacts students have with other students in the school, they stay, stay in place in their classroom, limited contact in the hallways are coming and going during transition times and only the adults' transition, as well as mask-wearing, which we're going to discuss as well when we get to safety protocols. There are some districts and there are schools where we could open with regular capacity in the classrooms, as much social distancing as possible and wearing masks. Each one of those steps reduce the risk somewhat. But I believe the committee recommended their A-D alternating plan as their first choice because then we would know for sure that regardless of how many kids signed up for a Virtual Academy, we automatically have at least a 50% reduction to the number of students in any given space of a classroom. So this is not parents choosing first and second choice or virtual. This is, we would need a solid recommendation of a single plan for elementary and then the Virtual Academy for anyone who'd like to sign up. And to the point of the deadline, Ms. Anderson, we, we would make that a deadline within the next weeks. We would give a deadline in the survey to parents, but of course, would honor any parent who last minute might change their mind and want to enroll in the Virtual Academy as well.
I have a question. Is there anyone looking at reduced school day? As far as, are these students going to stay in one classroom all day long on a regular schedule or what, what, are we looking at a reduced day or no?
The committee can speak to what theirs was. I will say that a reduced day, anytime after you're with the same group of folks for 15 minutes or more, I believe, is a guideline that at that point, you've been with the same group of people. But I don't believe in Ms. Dryden, if you want to take that one, regarding consideration for shortened days.
We, we did not look at shortened days. We felt that once kids are in school and with their group, that that would be the best way to deliver the instruction for our students, as well as keep them safe.
This is Mrs. Van Heitzen again. Sorry. Can, can, Mrs. Dryden, do you think you could just kind of walk through, so as, as an elementary parent that might be on this, this, this call with us? What, what is a typical day for an elementary student going to look like?
So if we're looking at the A-B schedule, the day would look like they would be providing, some of the details that we're working on right now as the committee is what the instruction or delivery would look like. So I'm going to be a little generic right now, but they would deliver instruction in person. And then the virtual day may be where the teacher sends materials home to practice or there might be things through CSO or online or through our learning management system for students to practice on what was taught the previous day. And then on Friday, it would be where it would be a virtual lesson.
Ms. Dryden, with the specials teachers, are those the ones that you're referring to would move into the classroom to replace the, the, let's say, second-grade teacher while that class's art teacher comes in and delivers art in the classroom?
Yes. Yes. So we will also have specials on the days that we're in person.
Any other questions on elementary?
So while I understand that the Friday would be used for PD and an extra deep cleaning, was there any consideration for making Wednesday the all-remote learning such that students would be in a building for two days, then there would be a deep cleaning? Then you come back Thursday, Friday, there could be a deep cleaning on Saturday, so that there really is only two days of population prior to returning.
Very bad. Do you want to answer that or do you want to answer that?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. So the other thing that we have to consider is making sure that, there's lots of things that we have to consider. We need to look at the middle school and high school schedule to determine what day that remote learning is so that we can accommodate families. So that actual day has not been solidified. We did talk about, when we did the slide, that we wouldn't specify, we want to specify exactly what day it was. It would just be one day of remote learning.
It was common, though, Mr. Brinker, that Wednesday or Friday seemed like it makes sense. So the argument that there would be a deeper cleaning on Wednesdays, and I don't want to leave any of our viewers or any of our board members with the understanding that we would not be cleaning as rigorously as possible between, and, and our facility committee will address that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to just say, I mean, why would we need a day to do it? Why wouldn't it be done in the evenings while kids aren't in the building?
We will be. We will be. We'll be cleaning every night. So it's also a matter of, again, the consistency across all of the plans and then also meeting families' needs with a day in the middle of the week. You know, you already would have children in school two days, everybody out on a Wednesday, two more on Thursday or Friday, plus two weekends. You know, what's the flow for families? Because we know, and this is the complexity of it, how difficult that gets to make family arrangements for care and for having their children at home, if not in school, five full days. So having it on a Friday would at least create a block of instructional days for some of the students, depending on the plan.
Mrs. Van Heitzen, again, so the, the PD day that the staff would have, too, is, is the thought that if there's some adjustments that need to be made to some of the the learning, that that would happen on that particular day, or is there, there's going to be a separate plan outlined for developing what's going to be done on that PD time as well?
Correct. Go ahead, Sarah. Yeah. As always, our, our Wednesday professional development time has always been devoted to what we call professional learning communities, which is reflecting on how learning is going and making changes. So yes.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Van Heitzen?
Yeah. Yes, it did. But I know I got other questions and I think it'll come up later, so I'll say so.
Okay.
And then I think with my getting on so late that I got a little frazzled here, I do have two more slides. Sorry about that. So with our first choice, where we talk about the blended model, in phase three, we know that all students will be virtual. And our, in the four, the phase four is what the model was that I talked about, the A-B plan. And then in phase five, we will bring all kids back together for four days. Next slide. So just once again, in an easier format to look at, in phase three, we'll be all virtual. In phase four, we'll have that blended model of four days, face-to-face, and then that one virtual day. And then same thing with phase five, we will blend all classes and students together. And now I'm done.
Just one point of clarification. So the, the phasing that is being referred to directly reflects the phase that our region is in by the state at the time. We don't get to select our phase that's put upon us that we've been familiar with in the spring and now, which is why we stay closely tuned to MDE and to the governor's office for that phasing plan. Any phases one through three, we do not have a choice. In-person instruction is not allowed at all for public schools and so, and for our schools. So we know that. So then the four and five is where we have a little more local control and latitude around what we would do.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick, are you, maybe I'll speak about this later in some of the other slides, but if a family selects the Virtual Learning Academy and life becomes better, which we're optimistic that it will, and, and we suddenly advance a phase, what, what is the option for that family?
So for the continuity of curriculum, you'll see it in, in a few slides, the Virtual Academy is going to ask parents to make a minimum of a semester commitment just so that as we map out learning for that student in their courses or classes or that grade, we can capture a full semester's worth of learning for those students that enroll in the Virtual Academy. But then they could come out to join the, the regular school plan, whatever phase or situation they're in at the time. But we're asking for a minimum of that semester just so that learning is more continuous for the students.
Kind of in the same vein, is there a thought as to if all the students will be evaluated in some manner to see where they are from an instruction perspective, Mrs. Olson?
Yes, absolutely. And we had a sub-task force devoted to that and they have several slides here coming up. So I mean, should we go, yes, to, I guess, one of the key pieces we identified last spring was needing to know, well, as always, throughout the many, past many years, formative assessment and universal screeners were a big part of instruction, meaning we use assessment to understand where students are with their learning so we can design effective lessons. That's never been more important than right now. So we have a plan for that and that's written out in a few slides coming up. Good question.
Okay, next.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Dan Halligan. I'm one of the assistant principals at Royal Oak Middle School and it is my pleasure to talk about the middle school plans and to go second in this presentation as, as Ms. Dryden handled a lot of the specifics that my plan, that our plan also entails. So first, we worked with a group of teachers and, and myself to kind of brainstorm some different paths and ways and what it could look like in the middle school in 2021. And we really landed on three driving factors for this plan. One of the big driving factors is we wanted to create a system and a structure that really promoted student engagement in the middle school. And we wanted to make sure that that was at the forefront of any decision or a plan that we were kind of proposing. We do believe that our preferred choice here does accomplish that idea. We also think that we wanted to create a We also think that we wanted to create a structure that allowed us to transition in and out of phase three, phase four, and phase five, depending on, on where we are as a region and also what our needs are at that given time. And the big part for that, for us, was the ability to keep the structure the same, no matter what part of the region we're in. And that also meant for us, that you'll see in our plan, is we're always going to have a foot in the virtual world. So in other words, our students are always going to be in one virtual class, no matter where we're at, because it is a skill we're going to have to get better at as we move forward. And so we're always prepared to be in 2021 in all virtual environment, just in case. And finally, we wanted to build a plan that offered the maximum amount of safety procedures that we, protocols that we could put in place. And what that means essentially is to be able to use not only the required safety protocols, but the strongly recommended and the recommended if necessary. We do believe our first choice accomplishes that plan best. So our first choice is that same A B model that you saw from our elementary. It would be the same plan, and it would, we think, provide the most opportunities to offer what we're going to call grouping students, which are bringing in students two days a week, having three days virtual, and that would ensure social distancing in our classrooms. That makes all three levels of possible safety protocols more feasible and stronger in our minds. Our second choice mirrors a plan you're going to see in, in a little bit, and that is the high school plan that I'm not going to give away, but kind of will, then just did. The idea that we would actually go all virtual with our students in phase four. And that would mean that our six through 12 students are aligned. We would keep the same protocols in place, but we would be all virtual in that environment. Our third choice is actually back to the elementary plans, and that would be looking at bringing in students, all students, four days a week. In that plan, we do want to specify that we'd have limited social distancing options. Students would still stay, students could still stay in rooms. We'd have limited passing time exposure, but in the classrooms, we would be looking at potentially up to 30 students in a classroom. We can go to the next slide? So as you see in the first choice, we want to see in and out of phase three, phase four, and phase five. In these models, students would be taking two, in, in the hybrid model, students would come into school for two in-person classes. They would still have a third class that would be all virtual. And the point of that, again, is to make sure that we're always good at using our, our skills that we're developing as both online instructors and online learners. In phase five, we would actually bring both groups together. So in phase five, just like the elementary, and we then would have a situation where it would be safe enough to involve all students in learning on those days, but we would still keep that online class developed. We can move it on. Our second choice, again, is that all virtual model. In this way, phase three and phase four are the same. In phase four, we would now have the option to bring some students in if we needed for extra support and extra help, if they needed that extra help in the building. In phase five, then it kind of looks exactly like it just looked in the last slide, which is bringing in students for, for learning four days a week, two classes. That fifth day is a big day for professional development as we're all learning these new ideas of, of how to be a better online instructor and how to find those moments of engaging with students. And we can move to the third choice. And in the third choice, again, that's bringing in every student for their classes. We still stay with the three-class mantra in it during a day, so we'd limit passing time. That would be our limited social distancing, but we wouldn't be able to social distance inside the classroom. In phase five, phase five looks exactly like phase four. So it does involve pretty strong transitions back and forth. And that's a very brief version of a presentation that could have gone much longer. I'm here for any questions.
Mr. Halligan, I'm sorry, I noted on the bottom of one of the slides, there's a reference to math classes. Could you address that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the big things that we're going to try to work for and work to is we really thought that what we're going to learn from our action research project, essentially of the last three months of school last year, is that when we talked to our sixth grade students, our sixth grade parents, we saw overwhelmingly that it was kind of tough having seven different online classes at once. And what that meant for us in using state guidelines on virtual instruction and how much time kids should spend in classes, it ranged from 90 minutes to 180 minutes. So it really limited what our teachers could do as well. So they were kind of really focused on, hey, if I go deeper too much, I'm going to take up too much of a kid's time and I'm one of seven. So they started worrying about, how much time can I get for an instruction a day? So they kind of limited themselves to 15 minutes. So we know that we can't really engage students with 15 minutes a day of instruction online. So we thought, well, what can we increase? We couldn't increase the time during the day, that was seemingly impossible. But what we could do is limit the number of courses kids would enroll in at any given time and taking at, at one time. So while our structure would not change, we would offer the same classes that we've always offered the entire semester. In any given time period, though, a student would only be working three of their courses. That's what we thought would be a maximum idea, to create more engaging opportunities in each of the classes for deeper learning of schools. What that means is that if we ever got to work in person, we would, because remember, we have one virtual class, we would definitely have math in person. We've read the best research, we've read the best practices for schools when, when things happen that take out school every year, it's math that we go to first. It was also very much structured in our parent survey as the, one of the areas where they said, it was hardest to help my kid online in math.
Mrs. Van Heijtmaer, I have a couple of questions. Hi, Mr. Halligan. So actually, and I have one for, for the, for the whole group. But so one of the challenges for parents and maybe for students is that transition into, you know, going from fifth to sixth grade. So now we have our students that, you know, have traditionally had, you know, it used to be called dog days, I don't know what it's called today, but I apologize. But so they have that time where they're able to transition and kind of feel, see what it's like to be in middle school, you know, they're used to the elementary. So what is the plan and thoughts for those that transition for the kids? And also, Mrs. Fitzpatrick, so, you know, the other side of the coin is if, if people aren't social distancing and things get worse and then we shut down, what parents are going to have is not, they're not flipping into that Virtual Academy. I guess if we could just clarify what happens if we go the other direction?
You want to go first, Mr. Halligan?
I, I love, yeah, well, you know, whatever, whatever works here, I'll, I'll hold rank. But yeah, I can go first. So if I, if I were to go first, in terms of what you're referring to is Bulldog Bounder, we, we love that program. It has grown tremendously over the past four to five years, and it's something that we, we look forward to as a staff to say, we, we can't wait to meet. And we really haven't had that awesome opportunity to meet our new sixth graders yet. And then talking to sixth grade families, I know how excited they are to start life in middle school. You know, biggest thing on that day usually is how to open a locker. It's, it's amazing how context and perspective changes what's important to that conversation. We've already been working, if you, if you've ever met our technology integrations, Jill Hill, you've seen somebody passionately work towards in kids in any kind of environment and working on how to set up an online environment. So we're, yeah, we're all hands on deck working to support our students in terms of help with how to get onto a computer to look into these, into some of our classrooms that you're going to hear about soon and work with some of these systems. We also feel like thinking of our sixth graders through this process, limiting and really spending that first week to two weeks during school to really work, especially if we're in an all, if we happen to be in an all-virtual environment, really learning that process and really taking advantage of that in low-stakes element, right? So you're not giving our first test in that first two weeks to try to figure out if they can, if they know the students. We've always kind of done that, but we really want to get hard now in the 2021.
So the second part of your question is with regard to the difference between the plans that each of our levels would be in, and then how does the Virtual Academy fit in? So we have parents already who have emailed us to say either they, their child, or their family situation warrants that regardless of what the district is doing, one day a week instruction or five in person, it doesn't matter, they want to be fully online. And that would be the group that we would then send toward our Virtual Academy selection. And as I said before, with a minimum of a one semester commitment to that program. We also, though, are looking at using the same tools to some degree, using our own teachers in the classroom for as many days as the plan might show, like in the A B plan, a two-day-a-week in-person instruction, and then the other online that would be directed by our teachers. So we would, we also heard from our surveys and from our parent feedback in the spring that they wanted greater interaction, live interaction, that synchronous learning or just even socialization with classmates and with their teacher. And so going in and out of our, our phases, depending on the state, would be the main group of our district, we believe. And then for those that want to be fully online and virtual, regardless of what we're doing, that would be the enrollment in the Royal Oak Virtual Academy. So we, we want to separate those two because we want whole groups to move, again, staying in our own lane as learners so that the students' learning doesn't create any holes for them between the different options. So it's kind of the difference between moving in and out of phases depending on face-to-face instructional restrictions and then joining our Virtual Academy.
For clarification, is what the instruction that's being provided through the Virtual Academy, is that Royal Oak teachers that are providing that Virtual Academy learning?
It is. I have a question. It says, ability to invite students to campus based on need. Who determines the need and how would that work?
Yeah, fantastic question. You know, something that we want to tackle early on in how we think about this. In our last work, like I said, the last spring, we had students that we knew we were working really hard to make sure they had the right access and getting computers and getting time spent. But one, one thing that we could provide in that format is a, is a quiet, safe, supportive learning environment for students that we know they would, they, they could miss without us. So the ability to bring students back in that fashion could be fantastic to just help and assist students, even if we're in all-virtual world. So to determine that need would be something that a, a team would be working towards and, and a team would work, work for. Again, I should mention, it is not our first choice. We want to be with students. We just want to make sure that we're adhering to all of our proper safety protocols in that first-choice plan.
And could a family reach out to you if they felt that their student needed that?
Always, always.
I just, I just want to get some comments to people that might be listening or some information to people that might be listening about our ability to provide computers for students that want to participate. We have the capacity to do that in this district. Do you see any problems with that ability?
No, I do not foresee, we can accommodate those needs. We had a meeting this morning to go over our inventory of Chromebooks and iPads, and there, we believe we can meet the need of, of anybody that needs, needs that. We will continue that practice. Of course, we started that last spring, and that is something we expect to continue this year.
And can we also, we're also providing or helping with internet access if need be, so?
Yes.
What's our policy about the internet access as far as providing online services and stuff?
We have, our purchasing department has a, with contracts with Verizon. So that is something that was worked out with Verizon, another provider last spring, and they're handling that on a case-by-case basis.
Anything else for middle school?
One more gentleman, again, I'm sorry. So I know that we did a distribution of approximately 600 Chromebooks. And so regardless of the plan is selected, pretty much, we, every student needs to have access at home. And they should have if they had been participating in, you know, during the spring. And we, we know that we didn't have 100%. There were some students that weren't able to. So what is the, the, the plan to ensure that everybody has that access prior to the first, first day of school?
We have sent out, we will do another refresh before school starts of seeking, reaching out to families and asking them to respond if they have those needs. We did that several times in the spring and even once over the summer for the summer learning. And so we'll do it again. We have a good system, we have a good system for that in place now.
We also know that any of the devices that were deployed in the spring short of our graduating seniors, we left those in place with families for summer learning as well as not knowing exactly what fall would look like. So anyone who had a need in the spring still has their device and would continue to keep that device.
Can you comment a little bit about the summer learning that's been going on?
Yes, I can. And anyone else chime in, because there's other people on this call who were, and I, who were involved with designing it. We had a K, we have a K-12, and it started back in the beginning of July and, you know, went out in newsletters. It was a free online access to, I want to say, all the activities. It was self-paced and there, but we did provide access to teacher coaches who could help with technical questions or offer encouragement. These were all programs that we already owned, that we'd been using for years in the district. So we, these teachers that were, are doing this this summer, as coaches are, for them, are pretty familiar with the products and can monitor student progress and kind of offer encouragement to say, hey, you know, keep working. We did offer at the elementary level, liter, uh, summer school literacy program remotely this summer that we have offered for many, many years. So we were able to do that again. And our high school did offer their regular summer school as well this summer. So there were a lot of pieces.
Did you find that we had a greater participation in our summer learning this year versus prior year?
So the first piece I mentioned, we'd never offered before, so that was new. I would have to double-check the numbers for the two other programs that we've offered before. I can double-check on that. The high school oversees the, the traditional high school, summer school program. I looked at those numbers, it looked a little similar to previous years.
Miss Olson, I can address that.
Thank you.
Pretty, Mike Jeremini, high, high school principal. Enrollment was fairly consistent in the high school credit recovery program for the summer. A little bit lower than normal, but it was entirely remote. And usually in summer school, we have kids onsite, working directly with instructors in their online modules.
And then, Ms. Olson, do you have the number of students that participated in that first option? You talked about our free online access to our technology programs and how many signed up initially?
Ben or Lisa chime in, but I believe we, we got close to 600 or more. Am I, am I wrong? I haven't looked at that in a month. I haven't looked at those numbers since we start, since we...
You're, you're correct. Roughly 300 for K-5 and 300 for 612.
Deb, I just wanted to add, this is Jane Flaherty Graham, Director of Special Ed, that we have approximately 82 students with I E Ps that are receiving direct face-to-face service this summer individually. So with the help of the facilities committee, we have all the P P E equipment that we needed. And the, the students meet the teacher at the door, they do a symptom checklist, they have their temperature checked, and then they are escorted to the building. The parents are not allowed in the building, and they meet with a therapist or their teacher individually. And we have 30 students at Upton right now, and we have 50 students that are at, or 52 students that are at Adams. So this is our third week, and it's been going well. And I'm proud to say that Royal Oak is the solo district in Oakland County that is providing face-to-face individual E S Y support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ready for next slide? Thank you, David.
Good evening. I'm Karen Howell, and I'm one of the assistant principals at Royal Oak High School. I had the opportunity to work on the committee to bring you the high school plan. Much like the elementary plan and the middle school plan, we took a collaborative path to come up with this plan, meeting with teachers, the instructional office. And like middle school, we had definitely some key ideas and considerations that were driving our work. One of the things that was driving our work is that we have to understand at the high school level, high school schedules do not allow for keeping students together in small groups, unlike the elementary and middle school levels do. A main reason of this is, is really just the sheer number of courses that we offer and the different programs and varying programs that students participate in. Some other key considerations that we took into account was that high school students have graduation and post-secondary requirements that they are still working towards and, and, and meeting. And we also wanted to try to provide a plan that avoided gaps in instruction between continuous courses. We, we definitely wanted to keep equity and access for students in regards to technology and support from teachers and support staff. And we also wanted... And we also wanted to keep in mind the ease of transition between the different phases, Phase 3, 4, and 5. So, as such, we are recommending a 100% virtual experience for students in Phases 3 and 4. Phase 3 would be fully virtual, somewhat similar with some added features to what students experience in the spring. But then, in moving into Phase 4, it does allow us to expand opportunities for students and staff to access the building and for students to access staff. In order to do this, we would be utilizing a modified schedule, incorporating designated morning synchronized instruction time so that classes have an opportunity to meet as a group and participate in live learning and collaborate with one another. There would also additionally be asynchronous learning lessons that the students would be participating in each week. Afternoons would actually give our students an opportunity for additional support by utilizing an A-B grouping Tuesday through Friday to allow access to teachers so that students that need a little extra support, whether it's in understanding an assignment, maybe a reteaching opportunity, or to meet with some support staff, it will provide them that access. Mondays, we will remain all virtual and all classes will actually meet in a shortened amount of time on those days. And teachers will be using Mondays as kind of like a launch opportunity to work with their kids and meet with their classes. This way, they can go over, you know, where they were last week, what the week ahead looks like, reminders, take questions, and really just get the week off to a good start. Next slide, please. So, in this slide, you can see our recommendation for the three different phases. In Phase 3, as I said, we are all virtual. There would be scheduled time for synchronous instruction along with that asynchronous instruction. Students would participate in their traditional six classes per term. And we would still be utilizing that Monday idea as a launching time for teachers and students to come together and get ready for the week ahead. In Phase 4, again, that allows us this opportunity to provide opportunities for students and to come into the building and interact with staff and have access to technology. We feel this allows for equity for all students in these in-person opportunities. And we also feel that, given the nature with the six different classes and the ability to keep them in small contained rooms and just moving teachers to them, this allows for our safety protocols to continue to be followed and the safest opportunity for our students to continue in learning. It also really does allow for a more seamless transition between Phases 3 and 4, since we do need to keep in mind that we may be phasing in between, or moving between phases throughout the school year. And then, finally, in Phase 5, we will be looking into a hybrid-blended approach that has both in-person and virtual elements. But this, this plan is still a work in progress. We really do want to place a heavy emphasis on in-person instruction, but we want to make sure that we're being cognizant of the pending public health information that comes out. But in order to move a smooth transition, we will be aligning class schedules to try to ensure that that ease of transition between Phases 4 and Phase 5.
Karen, this is Gary Briggs. Talking about transitions, one of the things that I'm sure you've thought about, if we're in the middle of a semester and we go from Phase 4 to Phase 5, are we going to finish out that semester in Phase 4 virtual and then start the new semester in Phase 5? I mean, are we planning on changing the phase or our teaching delivery in the middle of a semester?
Right. So, that's still, that actual determination. We've been looking at what some of our neighboring districts have been saying, and many of our neighboring districts are saying that there should be like a two-week time difference so that that transition can occur appropriately for all students and staff. But that's still, that's still a work in progress, that particular decision.
Can you just talk through, so as I, as I read this, Mrs. Powell, so the Monday is the day that students are able to meet in small groups or there's, there's office hours. What if there's a high demand for that? Because a lot of students like that in-person component. How do we address the capacity for that?
So, no, Mondays actually, Mondays will be an opportunity for students to participate in all six of their classes in a virtual setting. And it will allow for teachers to meet with their classes as a whole and really kind of launch the week. Those in-person opportunities really come into play more Tuesdays through Fridays in the afternoon. And we have, we will be grouping students in like an A-B schedule similar to what elementary and middle school levels were speaking on. And what we're planning to do is offer kind of a every-other-day kind of opportunity where on Tuesdays, first through, first through third hour, Cohort A may attend in person and then Cohort B may log in from home and still be able to receive that support through virtual means. And then, that would be the same on Wednesday. It would, Cohort A would still be able to attend in person with Cohort B logging in from home, but that would be for hours four through six. And then, Thursdays and Fridays, it would flip. So, then Cohort B would be available to come into the building during those times, first through third hour on Thursdays and fourth through sixth hour on Fridays.
Also, with some of the special things that we have in relation to the DP program and their NYPD, you know, like the personal projects, like the, the classes that are held specific for the DP students, you know, that was always in the early hours or the end-of-day type of activities or class time. How, I know that's kind of getting into some minutia and stuff, but is that going to be addressed as part of this plan as well, how to accommodate for some of that?
Yes, it will. It will be, it will be addressed. We are, we are still looking at options to address all of the unique needs for all of our various programs, but those, those things will be addressed.
One more question, Patrick, too. I know, looking at the schedules for the students too, and I don't know if you're going to talk a little bit about this, but I know the state is still working through the instructional hours required for us to have during the course of the year. And I think I was on a webinar this week, so they're still talking through that. These abbreviated schedules, are we hoping that that will accommodate then or fit into whatever the state's plan in regards to those hours that were required?
Yes. So, the current requirement for a minimum of 1,098 hours and 180 student days is something that was relaxed in the spring just due to the closures that we had. So, we had greater levels of forgiveness days. Moving into the fall, as we launch any hybrid plan, we currently have provisions under the law to register students as hybrid or online and still meet the hours that are required, regardless if the state changes it or not, and in the days of instruction. And so, we would still hold our regular calendar. No matter how we're presenting instruction, we would still keep to the district's regular calendar of instructional days and vacation days, which does meet all the letters of the law as they currently exist now. But through the way that we register each student in pupil accounting, it would log them as either virtual learners, hybrid learners, or full face-to-face. So, we would seek a hybrid level at a minimum for every learner, just to be sure that they're all covered and that we count every student as they're participating in our programs. We also have some requirements, then obligations, in terms of accountability for those learners when they're online. And there are certain ways within the law that we prove that the student is active and engaged in that online learning, much like some of our students do now who take full online classes through Michigan Virtual or other platforms. So, that's something that we, our groups are collaborating with the county on because we do have a couple of people out at the county level at open schools that guide us on all pupil accounting protocols. That also speaks to why at some of the days, we didn't want many more half-days of, you know, school if we are face-to-face. It just causes one more chance for a day then to be blended, virtual and online as opposed to face-to-face. So, that all was considered in our schedule recommendations.
I have a question. How are we going to handle the transition from 8th grade to 9th grade for those students? Because usually, there's opportunities for the kids to come and get used to the school and families to get used to the school, and how is that going to be handled this fall?
Similar to the middle school, those plans are still in development. We have a nice orientation event that we usually conduct that Friday before school begins or two Fridays before school begins, where we bring all of them in, tour the building again. They've had that tour in the spring where we've already brought them over, but obviously, those opportunities were missed. So, we have teams that are talking about how to do that in a safe way and most likely in a remote way to make sure that students are connected. So, there's a lot of conversation about what it means to build culture in a remote or virtual environment. It's a little bit different than we might think about in a physical classroom environment. So, that's all part of our consideration.
Anything else on high school?
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jane Flaherty Graham, Director, Special Ed. Good evening. Tonight, I just want to share our Special Ed goals for what hybrid learning will look like. Similar to elementary and middle school and high school, this plan was developed with all students in mind because we know our Special Ed students are Gen Ed students first. So, in that thinking, we also know that last spring was challenging for students and families, but especially for our kiddos that have IEPs. So, one of our top priorities is to provide that face-to-face learning for our kids that have IEPs while keeping their health and safety a priority and making sure we can socially distance as recommended by CDC. We want to provide more intensive, small-group instruction while following a reduced schedule to ensure safe learning environments. So, similar to the middle school and elementary, we are looking at that A-B grouping where students would attend a couple days a week for face-to-face learning. And then, we want to continue to improve our delivery of remote learning opportunities for students with IEPs by utilizing synchronous learning for them. This is something that we know was a challenge last spring. It was new for everyone. But since our kids have been exposed to it and some of our students are doing synchronous learning for ESY this year because they decided that for their family, face-to-face wasn't something they wanted to partake in. And so, as we, as instructors get better with the virtual delivery of instruction, our students are also getting better with navigating that system. Next slide. So, our IEP meetings and evaluation guidelines, and this will take place, it will be the same for all phases 1 through 6. Our IEP meetings will continue to be held virtually unless a family requests an in-person meeting, and that's guidelines permitting. So, if they wanted a face-to-face meeting and Michigan happened to be in Phase 3, that's not allowable. But as long as we're in Phase 4 through 6, we would honor that request of a face-to-face meeting. Surprisingly, there's been a lot of positive feedback from parents about IEP meetings in the spring. We, I didn't keep count. I think we held about 180 meetings virtually. And the parents were, I think they felt more relaxed, more accommodated, didn't have that, some of that anxiety of coming into a school building with a team of 12 people around the table. We tried to limit to the most, you know, prominent staff involved with that student. So, anyway, surprisingly, it was very, it was very positive. So, we will continue that. All students with IEPs will, we will review their IEPs in the fall. Even if they're not up for review, every case manager at every level will be looking at that student's IEP to see where we are as a state in Michigan and if we need to make adjustments and write additional plans if we're in a virtual situation. So, everyone will be reviewing those plans and parents will be also involved in that process. And then, in-person evaluations were, that were required last spring or will be in the process this, this fall. We will conduct those in the school year early as soon as possible. And that if there is an opportunity to do some remote evaluations if we're in Phase 3, we have also been prepared to go forward with that. Next slide. So, our self-contained classroom programs for our students with ASAD are Level 3 in emotional impairment. At all levels, we are going to follow that A-B schedule similar to the Gen Ed peers in the pre-K through 8th grade. And we're going to also adopt a program for the high school. Our students will be offered in the self-contained programs that two-day, face-to-face learning all day long. Students will participate in the instruction face-to-face a couple days a week. And then, at the elementary level especially, we have, if they're in a cohort, if their cohort is a Monday, Wednesday, we can also offer our students an extra half-day on their opposite cohort day where they can come in. They can attend a special like music art or gym or PE and then also receive their ancillary services such as speech, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and social work. So, we're building in some extra time that way as well. Our schedule right now for our adult transition program, TRALES, will be the same schedule, will be an A-B type schedule. We are, you know, staying in close contact with the county to see right now, even if, even when we're in Phase 4, the roadmap says there is no field trips. Well, our students in the adult transition program spend half their day out in the community. So, we're closely monitoring that to see what opportunities still exist for our students because it is a work-based setting. It's not, it's not a field trip. So, with the guidance of the county and monitoring the progress with the state of Michigan, we'll make adjustments to that program as, as we can, as things change. And then, again, I think I mentioned, the high school students will follow their schedule in person and have also additional office hours for speech, OT, PT, and social work. Next slide. So, our academic support teachers for all students in K-12 at all levels are going to again follow the A-B schedule similar to their Gen Ed peers. This will be face-to-face. And we will be able to again allow that extra half-day for students to do some of the ancillary services. And we're also going to do, so our, our academic support teachers that will be in the building four days a week will have like eight learning blocks of time. So, they will be able to divide up their caseload and bring in three students at a time and work for two-and-a-half hours, a two-and-a-half-hour block intensively in small groups. So, that's something that I think is very positive for them. So, our students would be able to spend their two days in their Gen Ed classroom and then be provided with an extra half-day with that individualized, specialized instruction with their academic support teacher. We also have purchased the, it was called Lexia Core 5. It's an online literacy program that we can use actually K-12. And we were able to pilot it last year for free. This year, it was for a purchase. But it is, it's in place. Our families are familiar with it. So, if we're doing asynchronous learning, the students will have an opportunity to engage in something that they, that they are familiar with. Next slide. And then, finally, our babes, the early, the early-on programming. So, we have a very robust early-on program that services infants and toddlers, birth through 3. And it is a year-round program. So, our kiddos will continue to receive that in-person service. And they will, they, by law, they're supposed to be seen twice, twice a week. And we will provide that in-person, face-to-face instruction. And we will provide that in-person face-to-face instruction with the parent and the toddler unless they prefer to remain in a virtual setting. And if that's their case, we will, we will certainly honor that. But in order to ensure that the safety of our staff, we will offer that face-to-face instruction probably at the board office instead of the home environment because we don't have control of, of individual families' homes and, and that's, that's awfully risky for, for our staff. So we will provide that face-to-face instruction at the board office. And then weather permitting, we've got some beautiful days in Michigan right now and, and the fall will probably just offer some, some nice days then. So it's really appropriate for a young toddler to be able to go out in the grass and run around and, you know, have the teacher there to guide the parent in instruction. I think that's it. Oh. That's, that's more instruction, but do we want to, are there questions for special ed?
This is Mrs. Van Huyt. I actually have a question specifically from Mrs. Flaherty Graham. But in, in thinking back for the middle school and the high school, from Mr. Jereminy and Mr. Colligan, classes such as, as the performing arts ones, you know, bands, our orchestra, you know, some students really look forward to that once they get into middle school and once they get into the high school. And some other classes like Mr. Conrad's class and Mr. Anderson's class, those types of things where I would expect to be 100% virtual is going to be a bit more challenging. How is that, those being addressed? Because some students I know are, you know, probably look forward to those types of classes that are a little bit different.
It's a really good question. So those teachers are aware of the virtual plan and are aware that they'll have to make some modifications. They came up with some phenomenal ideas in the spring. That was an opportunity for us to certainly learn on the fly in a sudden crisis-type situation. However, they've been planning all summer, knowing that in some way, shape, or form, they're going to have to be virtual at some point during the school year, right? So even if we were proposing a virtual plan, it's highly likely that at some point during the school year, our region shifts to phase three and we're all virtual anyway. And so in particular, you know, I've spoken with the graphics teachers, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Robel. I just had a conversation today with Mr. Conrad and also with Mr. Jensen a week or two ago about some of the ideas that they have to make that successful. And as you know, Mr. Conrad is pretty creative and how we might put together opportunities to broadcast some type of performance. He has some ideas that are percolating and he's already requested a meeting. So those things are underway, and I think that they're going to do a really good job making sure that those programs, while looking different, are still going to be very meaningful for our kids.
Yeah, and at the middle school, a very similar answer. Our teachers are working really hard to figure out what that could look like and what capacity it might be in the different phases. But our plan is to offer the full Royal Oak Middle School experience in 2021.
Thank you both.
Any more questions for special ed? We can go on to our next, if not, we can go on to our next group that was working in instruction, and they were assessment, and that is also Jane Flaherty Graham and Lisa Shannon.
Lisa and I worked together. I think Lisa was going to speak to this.
Yes, good evening. Lisa Shannon, Supervisor of Elementary Education. And as you know, assessment and grading is also part of the instruction piece that we are working on. As you probably know and you've heard, I've talked about this at many board meetings, we have quite a robust assessment plan in Royal Oak. And the program spans all three levels. The nice thing about phase three and being remote is in, over the past few years, our assessments have gone digital. And so this is something that we get our, our kids on the computers and they take these assessments. So no matter if we're in phase three, four, five, our students will be able to do these digital assessments like we have in the past. So from our youngest learners, our pre-K all the way to 11th grade, Ames Web and NWA are two platforms that we use to screen our students. And so we will continue to do that. It's just going to look a little bit differently. But as you know, we, that's one piece of information, and we like to use multiple pieces of information when we are looking at our students. So we will also be using other assessments to inform our instruction. We call that those formative assessments that give us more information to be able to really dig down and plan our instruction to meet individual needs of each student. So you'll see that all the way through 11th grade with those, those screeners and those assessments. Of course, we have our 12th grade classes, our seniors that we don't have those assessments for, but those teachers know exactly what to do. They've never had them in the past. They use their formative assessments. They use their IB, International Baccalaureate, NYPD, rubrics and things that they, they use regularly. So we're not worried about assessment. We are going to do this. We've been doing this for years. Just, it's just going to look a little bit differently than we have in the past. If you'd go to the next slide, please. And one of our other expectations for this 2021 school year is that we will be grading, just have, just like we have in the past, for marking periods, your students will receive report cards. At the elementary level, we will continue with our standards-based grading that we have done for several years. If you're a middle school parent with students there, you will see some standards-based grading as well as they are making that transition towards that path. But you might also see some traditional grading. As you know, our sixth through 10th graders are also part of the middle years program. So after the end of units, you will see rubrics as well. 11th and 12th grade, you also see DP rubrics. At the high school level, you also see our traditional grading in place that's been in place. So nothing real exciting in the assessment and grading path, but just to reinforce that it will be happening. You shouldn't be seeing too much of a change, but you know, a little difference here and there. Any questions?
Lisa, it's Allison. I wonder if you could just explain to the parents that don't know the acronym, you know, the DP and the NYPD, just in case any new, new parents tuning in.
Absolutely. So we have International Baccalaureate in Royal Oak. We have a primary years program that is held at Keller. And we also have our middle years program, NYPD, which is our grade six through 10. And we also have the diploma program that is our 11th and 12th grade track. So I don't know how much you want me to go into that.
This is Mrs. Van Huyt again. So I have a question. The one that we hear a lot of conversation about from the spring in school as of today, hear a lot of conversation about ensuring equity for all our students. So I still am worried about the potential of students that didn't engage in any of our online training. How are we going to ensure that we do have this equity and that all those students that did not have engaged before, we're, you know, going to have them, you know, engage now or that they're going to, you know, have the tools and everything necessary?
We, that is still a goal, and we have, everyone that you're hearing from tonight, all of these administrators from each level had plans in place in the spring and will have plans again if we get into a situation where students are remote and not coming to school at all. And the high school plan is certainly be an example, is to reach out. We had these tiered systems of when teachers weren't hearing from a student, they, the student, the student was referred and another team reached out. It's almost a good example of MTSS, there's another acronym, multi-tiered systems of support where we continue to reach out. As Lisa pointed out, and another principal can chime in if you'd like, but they did get feedback from some of their older students that the, the lack of grading in some areas had an impact on their engagement. And that's something that principals shared with all of us. So the program that Lisa described should also help in addition to those other supports.
If I could piggyback on what Ms. Olson shared, I totally agree. When you think about the instructional models that each of the levels have proposed, there's some significant improvements over what we were able to do in the spring focused on trying to increase student engagement. The grading piece will be an important one. When we began in the spring, this was completely unknown to us, and we were initially responding entirely to students' social, emotional, and physical well-being needs, ramping up, providing food daily for families, and making sure that students had the emotional supports that they need in a very trying time. And that was our primary focus at the time. We've had a lot more time to think about how it is we can provide meaningful instruction and engage all kids. So as Ms. Olson said, that continuous outreach and then some of the improvements that we made to our schedules and models, including building access even if it is on a limited basis.
Just as you pointed out, Mr. Jereminy, one of the things we focused on was, you know, continued our food programs and that. So for the students at the high school that will be all virtual, will we then have a continuation of a service to them during the course of the school year since they won't be in the school?
Yes, absolutely. I believe Ms. Bella could provide further detail, but yes, that's part of the plan.
Actually, I have a, I want to chime in on that. How about if it's the two days a week in school, two days, the virtual, three days? What about the food programs for those students who are not in the schools?
That's a great question. We haven't addressed that yet. I'm going to make sure we put that on our list for the students that won't be in class to potentially receive free and reduced lunch.
I will add that our food service plans that went into place, you know, within two days after the closure, they were a very nimble department and very responsive. I would think that there will be days when we're both providing meals to students who aren't face-to-face and then to those that are there. And, and I'm confident that that food service will come up with a seamless plan for kids to receive their meals continuously.
Yeah, they've been remarkable, I think, so.
As a matter of fact, Mr. Jacobs has texted me and said it will be available for online learners. Can I also ask one question? I didn't know if this was a part of your planning, but the thought of, with the high school being fully remote, would there have been during the conversations about perhaps spreading out other schools, the elementary and the middle school, and utilizing for high school spaces so that there could be a different model developed? I know that seems a logistical nightmare, but was that given any consideration? We're stealing a little thunder from our presentation later on. Do you want us to answer all those questions now or wait until we get to facilities? You can wait till later.
Anything else on up through grading here with the instructions?
Okay. I'll introduce this and turn it over to Ben Raider right away because this is a team that did a lot, a lot of work. This is a group that started investigating what better or possible learning, online learning management systems were available. And this group, I think, started in late May or early June after we, you know, had, had time to reflect on the spring experience and knowing back in late May and early June, you know, what things looked like in July, August, or September, we just knew no matter what happened, that we needed to have a streamlined, robust, online learning management system for remote learning. And the team wrapped up their, well, not, they still have work to do, but they, they wrapped up with a recommendation the other day. I'll turn it over to Ben. And Ben, and Jill Hill, who someone mentioned earlier, her technology integrationist at the middle school, did a great job bringing a big team of people through a really in-depth process. So thank you to Ben and Jill and all the people that were on that team. So go ahead, Ben. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Hi, Ben Raider, Supervisor of Secondary Education. And I, like Sarah, do want to count all the teachers that dedicated a ton of their time over the last couple months, countless meetings, toiling through webinars, networking with colleagues in other districts, logging in and creating demo accounts and exploring the different options. It was really important for that team to really do this work and to find a really great product because like Sarah alluded to, when we pivoted on a dime overnight in the spring to online learning, it was clear that the tools that we had at our disposal were not robust enough. And we had to find something to really support the extensive online learning that we're going to be looking at K-12 this year. So we started this work with some really big non-negotiables. So whatever product we chose had to integrate with our student information system, MyStar, and it had to integrate with Google. We are, we are a Google district and do a ton of our work through the Google apps. It needed to really support great teaching and learning. It had to have a ton of tools that really gave teachers and students the ability to interact seamlessly and really to engage in a meaningful way. And then it also needed to be navigable, easy to navigate for both students and parents and teachers. So with that in mind, we put together a pretty extensive rubric that we use to evaluate four different learning management systems. And at the end of the process, we, we came to the conclusion, and it was almost unanimous as a, as a committee, that Canvas was the best fit for Wayloak schools. It will be a great tool for us to really support online learning coming up for 2021 and years beyond. It will help facilitate some live video conferencing that will, will be taking place in synchronous and asynchronous activities. Our work, I think, though, is really just begun. We now have identified the tool. Now it's the time to kind of get our teachers some professional learning and really figure out how to make this thing up and running for the fall. So I can take any questions you have.
This is Ben Huyt. I'm just chipping in, nobody, I just raised my hand, but just a question. So this learning management system, you know, some of the other key users, given that we're having students working remote at home at all levels, have we done, was some of our testing done with parents and actual students to, because one of the questions or one of the comments I hear from, from people within my neighborhood, you know, are some of the frustrations with, you know, particularly K-5 with the systems and the challenges that the parents had in helping their students. So I was just questioning if we had engaged any of those stakeholders in some of this?
Well, the stakeholders that we used, we had a, we had a really, you know, great representation from K-5 teachers onboard with us, and we really utilized them as our K-5 experts in terms of developing content and a tool that was easy to navigate for, for students and then networking with other districts. And really what we've selected is kind of an industry leader in Canvas in terms of a K-12 product. We really led with that in mind. We don't want a product that was taken from academia and the college world and adapted for high school that we would push down to K-5. We wanted to find a tool that was really a K-12 tool.
So, so then my question would shift to what are we going to provide for students and families just for, for the learning of them as well as the staff, I think, is engaged in the learning from what you're saying? But what about the families that are going to have to be helping their students at home?
Correct. We've got a professional learning subcommittee right now. Now that they have the tool, they're going to dig in and really start to put together professional learning activities for all stakeholders. So that would be designing activities for teachers, students, and parents.
Ben, when will that in-service, if you want to call it that, going to take place? Is it going to be pretty immediately, I hope?
For teachers?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we just literally are processing the purchase of this now, and we'll have access to it within the next week, week and a half. And it's nice, that'll give the professional learning subcommittee some lead time to start really developing a concrete plan for our teachers. But our goal is to get them, you know, some modules that they can do on their own before they report back in late August to... But our goal is to get them, you know, some modules that they can do on their own before they report back in late August to prepare for the school year.
Are there, are you setting up any kind of a website or something that if parents or someone needs support, they can get it?
Yes. Yeah. And we're looking at purchasing a level of this. So it will include a hotline that will allow, so if you're stuck in the platform and it's really a platform issue, you're having problems navigating or it's not working, then all stakeholders will have the ability to kind of call in and receive direct tech support from Canvas. And then we will also set up modules that parents will be able to access to kind of give them an understanding of how to navigate and how to work the system.
Is there a minimum of a need for a certain operating system that parents may not even have at their computer systems that they have? Or is it pretty?
It's, it's, it's web-based, but it also comes with a highly rated app. So parents will be able to access it from mobile devices or desktops. You know, and it's web-based, so it should be a pretty easy thing to universally access.
Good.
Just for clarity, Mr. Raiders, did you say like any kind of tech? I call it the help desk. So I think, you know, all, you know, all families have different tech, tech levels. And so the availability will not just be during the school day timeframe, it will be available like 24/7 hotline type of availability?
Correct.
Let me add that most high-quality platforms like this come with additional components. And we just looked at those this morning and one is always for the training. So it needs to come with a training module or training service or training support or a trainer. We expect that to come with software like that nowadays. But the second thing is it comes with that we have an option to get is what you're describing right now, our varying levels of immediate help, the help desk, the service. And it literally said 24/7 in literature that I was reading this morning when we were going through the, the details on the product.
Another point, I might be jumping ahead here a little bit, but are we going to talk about staffing for all of this?
Sarah's nodding yes.
I'm nodding. Staffing for, there's a subgroup that's going to be talking in a few minutes about staffing in general. But we believe as far as the LMS is concerned, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, we believe that we are currently staffed to implement the LMS.
Yes, yes. This shouldn't require any additional staffing to implement this.
Can you, so you indicated that it's a web-based product and staff would have the availability to access it to kind of get up to speed, but the actual training, if you will, for the system, how, you know, how many days of training is it? You know, what is the length of the training?
So we, we haven't put together the specific plan yet. Like I said, we're just now wrapping up and are recommending this as a, as a product to purchase. But, you know, when we think about those professional learning days that we have embedded in the calendars for K-8 and then the upper, the extra hours embedded in the schedule at the high school, those are going to be times where we can deliver ongoing professional learning. And we see a ramp up here, not where teachers and students or parents are going to be expected to be running out of the gate in September with this product. That's something that we can kind of learn and grow into over the, the course of several months.
I guess my question is, so if all of our plans have online learning from the first week of school, you know, we have to be pretty confident that first week of school with the learning.
Yes, and we will have, teachers will be competent. And it might be a transition piece between using things that teachers already have access to, like Google Classroom or CSO as we kind of ramp up with the new learning management system.
We expect training and professional development in any new system to be ongoing throughout any professional development time that we have throughout the fall. We expect it to be ongoing and for the first couple of weeks of school to be about becoming familiar and comfortable for everyone.
So I think what I heard Mr. Raiders say was, so the point is that this new learning system will be operational from the first week of school, but you have the backup of the Google or the CSO, but we're starting with this new Canvas, the first week of school? That's my question. I guess the next thing is parents, you know, trying to support their students and not wanting to have them struggle with flipping platforms and, you know, that, that seems very confusing to me.
I, I think the idea around a learning management system, though, is something that we lacked in the spring. So while we had CSO and we had Google Classroom that functioned in an instructional level, this learning management system pulls them all together into a single place. And so the logging on and getting in through Canvas and then what's offered to Canvas may, for a time being, rely on some of the other means that we have for, for meeting with our kids that they're most familiar with. And our high school students and Mr. Jereminy could add to this as well, are very familiar with Google and how that works. So the last point on their slide, or second to last point on their slide here is that one of the key things we look for is a product that would integrate and work well in conjunction with other things that we routinely use. We're still going to use MyStar as a student platform in grading and attendance and certain things, but it, it works through this learning management system more seamlessly. So I think in the beginning, we'll see a, a nice balance between new functions using the learning management system itself and Canvas as well as relying on things that our families and our students are familiar with. And much like you do with almost any new technology or product that you get, you start out using it at a pretty basic level and then we begin to turn on other functions, bells and whistles, and more complexities as people become more familiar with it. I, I would suggest to our committee doing the professional development and the learning for parents that if at any point prior to the school year, there's some things that they can do as trial runs, getting videos out to parents or getting help sheets out, anything that's preliminary in nature in terms of logging in and making sure you can get in. I know our, our committee will come up with a plan that gets that out as soon as possible. And certainly the expectations for use in those first few days of school, much like we do when we're face-to-face, will be a lot of orientation and getting to know each other and working out the, the bugs to the program. But I think given a, a normal year where we would roll out an entire process, this might have gone on a little longer with more research groups or pilot times. We just were not able to do that. We needed this product in place now. We need it to function as school starts. And so it's, it's somewhat of an abbreviated timeline from an ideal situation, but I'm, again, pretty, I'm confident that between the things we already use in this new management system, we'll ramp it up accordingly.
It's, it's part of that reach out to parents too. I think in terms of, you know, we have some pretty high D.K. and K., developmental kindergarten and kindergarten students, you know, coming in. I'm not certain how many of those are first-time families to the district as well. And so this will be, you know, very different than their children attending preschool. So this is going to be, you know, require a lot of assistance and support as well. So maybe, you know, again, everybody has different technology levels, but just so that those folks are aware of all of that as well and, and we have support specific for them too.
Well, I just want to remind people too, as much of the technology experience that we have, our meeting was five or 10 minutes late today because of the technology. So there's going to be some mishaps and there's going to be a learning curve here. And I think people need to have patience and understanding that this is all new territory for everybody. And I, you know, I just, thanks for all the hard work everybody's doing here. I mean, it sounds really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I can take this. We've touched on this many times tonight. This is about the Virtual Academy. I'm trying to see if there's any of these bullet points. And I don't want to read bullet points that we've already covered. Once again, this is the Virtual Academy that is separate and I put it, we put this slide next to the LMS slide so that we could have the opportunity to make the point that they are separate. As we talked about earlier in the meeting, an invitation will be going out this week to families, inviting them to enroll in the Virtual Academy. Yes, it will be staffed by Royal Oak teachers. It is aligned to our curriculum. Again, we are, we will be asking for a minimum commitment of at least one semester. We also wanted to point out that students who enroll in the Virtual Academy will also still receive the same supports and accommodations as they normally would and also have access to all their extracurricular activities as a Royal Oak student. So those are just a couple more points that didn't come up yet so far on the Virtual Academy. Other questions?
So it says, purchase a product aligned to Royal Oak curriculum. That is not our families purchasing a product.
Oh, no, 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 no. We have, our team is looking at, it'd be a, yes, it's just similar to the LMS. They have to, they're a logging, there's a platform that would, that would hold it.
Do we know what that, do we know what that platform is?
No, and that is not on here for a reason because we are still working with some consortium opportunities that are available right now with some products with the Oakland County and even some neighboring counties and working with other districts and counties right now to see on some consortium there. But it will, yeah, so we'll see. Sorry, that one, that information is just coming out from those on that receiving app.
Be determined which Royal Oak teachers are staffing this?
I, well, I will let the stat, the operations task force add to this. But I believe, I, I would guess would be presented as an opportunity, but I'll let the operations team add to that as well. Be presented to our teachers as an opportunity, I would think.
Yes. So I just want to clarify something too, that I think is worth noting for any parents who are considering the Virtual Academy program. When you typically drop your child off to a school, let's say into fourth grade or sixth grade, so they have a, a set Royal Oak teacher that's assigned to them and they do everything with that, you know, their classmates and peers that are in that class. If a parent enrolls their child in a Virtual Academy program, they're going to be part of the Royal Oak Schools Virtual Academy. It's not as if one of our fourth grade teachers will be teaching all day and then also accommodate two or three students on the side through this Virtual Academy. Basically, this is a new entity, a school, if you will, for the students that want to be in the Virtual Academy. So they'll become a part of a group that works together for the semester from across the district. You know, we could have many requests in the early elementary grades, but very few in the middle school. So it wouldn't be possible to leave kids in, again, both lanes of learning, both what's going on in the classrooms with their teachers as well as being a part of the Virtual Academy. So it is going to be somewhat separate and distinct from what some of their neighbors might be doing who are in our program, either physically coming to the school part of the day and then part online. The Virtual Academy will run as a online school on its own and it will be a district-wide program.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick, can you talk about the differences if perhaps we are 100% virtual because of what phase we're in, in the high school, for example? What's the difference between the Royal Virtual Academy and being 100% online at the high school?
So, so part of what we thought about is that if the program did include any face-to-face instruction, most families who would want to choose the Virtual Academy would not want to come to school or face-to-face at all. And so we, we were looking for a way to meet a student's needs 100% virtual separate from whatever the decisions are made for the high school or the, the rest of the levels for that matter. So it wouldn't be dependent upon, we weren't going to wait to launch a Virtual Academy if we needed it. We know we have families right now that want to enroll in that program. And honestly, there are several other programs running in other districts or other K-12 online opportunities commercially. We want our Royal Oak students in Royal Oak. We want them working with Royal Oak hired teachers and the best content possible at this commitment of a semester-long program virtually. So we definitely want to make sure our students are selecting one or the other. Again, continuity of learning is very important. And it could be that in the Virtual Academy, they're able to move at, you know, somewhat of a quicker pace or a more self-paced program depending on the grade and the content at the same time. But the, the opportunities for becoming a part of a cohort across the county is really just for purchasing power. This would still be a Royal Oak program supported by, in the backing of the power of a district-wide or a county-wide, rather, purchasing program.
So I understand that if there is face-to-face availability and I understand the ability to set this up prior to making that decision. But if we are 100% virtual in the high school, what's the difference between the programs?
So with 100% virtual program that's being suggested as the first choice for high school, they still have an opportunity to come in and meet in person, which again, a Virtual Academy family would, the reason for choosing it is that they wouldn't want that at all. And it's also eliminates the ability that students would come in and out of virtual. So let's say a family commits to the high school plan. And in a month and a half, things drastically change and we can offer a lot of face-to-face. We don't want a family selecting a Virtual Academy in mid-October or November. We wanted them to have made that commitment for the whole semester again for the learning. So it's, it's really already eliminating the variable of what the, the plan is for the school. So we don't want kids coming in and out of the programs. Because if we do rely on face-to-face instruction, then at the same time, we would be cutting back on virtual offerings. And the students that would want to be virtual 100% might miss out on some of that learning.
But the curriculum would be the same?
Curriculum will be, yes, very similar to what we're offering. Our, our scope and sequence would be, and that's the, the reason for vetting this product that we could have to support, but the classes that will be offered is that it's aligned with the Royal Oak Schools curriculum, yes.
Thank you.
So for students to transition back in the next school year should not be an issue if, if this, the Virtual Academy is in alignment with the Royal Oak Schools curriculum?
Correct. And that'll be a strong focus of running the program ourselves and having Royal Oak teachers do it. The downside of a parent going and choosing a, a, a commercial program right now on their own, not affiliated with our district, would be that we couldn't guarantee that. So running our own Virtual Academy would ensure that the two programs align.
And similar to the, the other virtual platforms, this will have some support, tech support as well? Similar to the learning management system, like a 24/7 type of thing, if there's questions, or is this one more limited in the course of the day and the structure of the day? Will the structure of the students' day be very similar to the structure of our, our students' days that we're?
So it's likely that a, a Virtual Academy would have more flexibility because they're, and they would have their own schedule somewhat for how the students meet and when they meet synchronously or asynchronously, which is a part of and dependent upon the, the product that we use and how many students we, we have basically for this. Right now, we only asked parents back in June about possibly selecting this virtual option and we didn't solicit or ask parents to sign up sooner, frankly, because we wanted them to know the entire plan or have a better indication of the entire plan before committing to the, the academy piece. So we don't, given the flexibility of the plans you're hearing about tonight, we believe there'll be some students in this, but, and we want to make sure we offer that to our residents and our students. But we don't anticipate large numbers, given all of the attempts we've made and the plans that you hear tonight about flexibility and safety protocols. But recognizing there'll be some that, that want to be virtually 100% of the time, no matter what we're doing.
And just one more question too. So if, if for some reason within the next month, everybody's social distancing, everybody wears their masks and we advance to step, phase five, and then parents had selected Virtual Academy, could they change their minds prior to the first day of school?
Yes. You know, we want to be as flexible as possible, but we also, you know, you can see how complicated all of these plans and programs would be and even hearing about the middle school running certain classes, you know, longer periods of time and then alternating throughout a quarter or semester. The more students you have moving in and out of that, the more chance there is for something to be missed. And we certainly wouldn't want that for our students. But of course, if a parent decides on virtual and the day before school starts, they want to join, you know, the rest of the students in the plan that's up for that level, we would certainly accommodate them.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a slide about technology and we have, we also covered all of this earlier in the meeting. But we kept it in here because it is an ongoing commitment of ours to make sure that our students who need a technology device for remote learning will have it. And this is And, um, this has been a process that was, you know, developed last spring and it is, it will be ongoing. So nothing new there really, that we really, uh, came, our, thanks to our tech department and, um, lots of other staff that helped out, um, delivering, um, over, you know, over the m- many months and, um, preparing devices for home use. I think we've got a good system. Any other questions on that?
Mrs. Fitzpatrick too, so has we distributed additional devices? Are there additional device, devices we're going to purchase as well?
Yes, yes, and so we will, we're looking at, um, additional purchases as much as possible. As you can imagine, the demand for Chromebooks or any kind of remote or more mobile devices is very high across the country. Um, so we have orders and queued up with our, our best vendors, kind of getting in line to get to those. But at the capacity we have in the district with existing technology, um, you know, has well suited us to, to supply those devices to families that still need it come fall. And as Mrs. Olson said, we'll, uh, definitely be, um, running another survey, uh, in a similar way that we did in the spring to see who else we might need to, uh, provide these devices to.
Okay, what's next?
This is, um, professional learning and, um, Jason Parrott, uh, Principal of Oak Ridge was going to present this, but he just had to leave the meeting. So he sent me, um, but you can see here, uh, that we had, uh, again, this professional learning committee fell under the larger instruction, um, team. And it's just one more of these sub-task forces that you've been hearing from so far this evening. And, um, Jason made this slide for us and he wanted, and he sent me this. Let me read to you what he sent me. He said, "As we finalize our decisions, we are committed to providing professional learning in all of the areas we have currently discussed." Right, professional learning and professional development keeps coming up tonight because we're doing so many new things. How do we do so many new things without learning about them? He said, "We have a group of 17 teachers at various levels and positions that are working to prepare professional learning in the areas of remote learning, socially-emotional learning, learning management systems, digital teaching help for parents, and culturally-responsive teaching. We will be meeting weekly to provide this professional development." And he wanted to add that, um, right before he left, he added that he has already stood, he heard the questions about, um, training for families or, um, experiences for families to try the new systems. And he says he, they've already been looking at that and he will look at it again tomorrow, uh, that, that question as well. Questions about professional learning?
Mrs. Olson, that, that online support that we're going to have through the systems, that's for parents, students, and staff?
Absolutely, for the learning management system, the document I read from the vendor this morning actually literally listed out, it was a bo-, you know, it was a table and it listed all the components, the support, and who it was available for and when, and there was definitely a line there for students and families. Yes. Other questions about professional learning? I forgot about this slide. This was one more, um, task force we had going because as you can see at this point, all of this information that we've presented so far and all these different groups, one of the things we were worried about was staying current and not missing anything and knowing what other groups were working on so that we could incorporate changes across the groups and stay current. And so this slide is more of a process slide. The communications subcommittee didn't really come up with any, um, big recommendations other than they did a great job or have been and will continue to do a great job of keeping us all informed and preparing, uh, gathering the latest information that we had to be shared, um, in a usable way. In fact, many of these slides, uh, they helped with many of these slides as well and will continue to do so as information, um, continues to be developed. So, uh, thanks to that, um, group.
Um, Ms. Olson, will this committee, uh, help with reaching out to families then?
Absolutely, absolutely, all stakeholders. So some of the, um, they won't directly, uh, reach out, but what they have been doing is creating content and creating slides and things like that. The principals and the district have been using, um, to share. Even tonight's a great example of, um, gathering this information tonight. So yes, the, the slot, the items that they prepare, they are pushing out to, that, so that they can be used, yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Patrick Wilinski. I am the Executive Director for Staff and Student Services. And I'm gonna introduce and talk a little bit about the operations part of our plan. We've heard a lot about the instructional and the, um, curriculum part of our plan. These are more procedural things. And, uh, I have two building administrators that are going to help me with this part of the presentation. Uh, next slide, please. The operations component to this four-part back-to-school plan addresses those non-instructional considerations such as screening processes, um, mask wearing, which I know a lot of parents have questions about, as do staff and students, um, procedures for COVID-19 cases. Um, inevitably, somebody's going to test positive for COVID-19, what do we do then? And staff work responsibilities. Um, there were, I believe, 51 items from the roadmap, the return-to-school plan that were required to submit that fit this operations component. I was very fortunate to have 35 people volunteer for this task force and, and got some really good input from teachers and staff. Um, I also was fortunate to have the help of Mike Jeremini, uh, Principal of Royal Oak High School, and Joe Uanis, Principal of Adams Elementary, to assist me in chairing this task force. Before we even met, uh, Mike Jeremini went through and, um, organized all 51 items into, um, what is recommended, or I'm sorry, what is required, what is recommended, and what is highly recommended, depending on the phase brand. So it really gave us our own roadmap for addressing these things. And then we separated those 51 items into three different categories, which formed three different subcommittees. Those being policies and procedures, staff work responsibilities, and communications. Fortunately, um, building principals seem to have a really good mind for policies and procedures. That's what they spend their day thinking about. And, uh, Mike Chair did chair that subcommittee, which was the, the bulk of our work. So at this time, um, if it's all right, Mike, you're still on here. I hope I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about these next slides.
Thank you, Mr. Wilinski. Uh, once again, I'm Mike Jeremini, Principal of Royal Oak High School. Uh, if we could jump to the next slide, please. As Mr. Wilinski mentioned, um, there was a lot to dissect and pull apart within the return-to-schools roadmap that was provided by the state. That roadmap is aligned to the different phases in the Michigan Safe Start Plan. Um, and we had the responsibility of making some determinations about not required elements, because those are obviously required, uh, but strongly recommended and recommended items and elements in those plans between both phases four and five. Um, it's at this point in the presentation, if you haven't already figured out, that there is some overlap between our, the work that our task forces do across, um, instruction, operations, wellness, um, facilities and extracurriculars. You'll see some overlap in the work that we do. So these committees are constantly communicating, um, about these different decisions that we're making. Um, so one of the recommendations that sort of carries over all of the recommendations for the policies and procedures subgroup is that the decision, excuse me, the decisions that we make in phase four, um, we would like to continue in phase five, uh, for two reasons. One, the adoption of consistent practices for the 2021 school year, uh, makes those practices easier to implement and those to become the norm, um, and everybody's accustomed to them. Um, but also the reality is in phase five, we invite more people into the school buildings. Um, and that increases contact among people, uh, and therefore we want to make sure that we're keeping people safe by keeping these consistent, uh, recommendations in place. Policies and procedures, we really broke down our work in that subcommittee, um, into two, two phases, the first, I shouldn't say phases, into two steps. The first step is making some decisions, policy decisions. What are the things we are going to do or the ones that we don't believe that are feasible for us to do, uh, as we pull them from the roadmap? And then second, the, the procedures, uh, which is the ongoing work that we're engaged in, which is designing processes and procedures that will be implemented, um, and communicated to staff, students, and families. Uh, so some of it is key recommendations and key decisions that we've made to date as a committee, particularly related to screening and health, uh, topics. Uh, all employees will be screened daily, uh, following county health and CDC guidelines. That is something that is already in place for any staff member, uh, reporting to a building, um, on any basis. So anytime a staff member comes to school, we have a screening protocol that we use, uh, before they're able, uh, to enter the building. And that is something that we are continuing in phases four and five. Uh, with regard to face masks, uh, the, the plan phases, uh, shifts some of the recommendation levels, uh, between phases four and five, um, and it has some allowances, uh, for students in lower grade levels. This committee feels strongly, uh, that facial coverings must be worn by all staff and all students in grades K-12, uh, while in the school building, in classrooms, and in common areas. And that pre-K students and students with special needs should wear facial coverings in the halls or common areas, understanding that it's a little bit more difficult for those students perhaps to consistently wear those masks. Um, but this is one of those, uh, strongest mitigating factors that we see. Um, and so that's something that this committee feels very strongly about. Uh, next slide, please. Um, you'll see some overlap here with the facilities group. All student desks in, um, particular facilities, uh, will undergo cleaning after every class period. It's important to note that a class period would be defined as any time a group of students leaves a room and reenters the room. Um, so, uh, in the, in the models where we are co-horted, where students are staying in a classroom, um, at the elementary and middle school levels, um, and then staying in the classroom and teachers are moving to them, that cleaning would not have to occur every single, uh, topic change because the teachers are moving to them. Um, any staff engaged in cleaning will wear gloves, surgical mask, and face shield, uh, when performing all cleaning activities, uh, that is a required element in phase four. Um, so we're just acknowledging that here. Additional mitigation protocols, um, that are required in phase four, recommended in later phases. Uh, students and teachers must have scheduled handwashing with soap and water every two to three hours. That's obviously something that we're supporting as a subcommittee, but also, uh, we know that specific procedures will need to be developed at building level, given our different building configurations, uh, different locations for bathroom sinks, and so on and so forth. So, uh, building administrators will work with their building teams, um, in order to develop specific procedures to ensure that that, uh, two-to-three hour expectation is met. Um, in terms of students, uh, who become symptomatic, um, or develop a fever, uh, while at school, they're already wearing masks because that's part of our requirements. Uh, they'll be transported by their parent or guardian, an emergency contact, or, and if they're clinically unstable, uh, by ambulance for off-site testing. We want to make sure that students get the care that they need, um, and that they are quarantined quickly. Next slide, please. Um, students who are sent home, uh, symptomatic, uh, they must be kept home until they've tested negative or completely recovered according to the CDC guidelines. That is a language from the roadmap, um, and that is, uh, required. And that's going to help us keep, uh, kids safe, uh, and staff safe. The reason that we say according to CDC guidelines, because as you know, these things shift over time. Um, and so those guidelines will be gathered, um, kept up to date, and will be regularly communicated to all stakeholders. Similarly, uh, employees with a confirmed case of COVID can only return to the workplace once they're no longer infectious, according to those same guidelines. Um, and finally, um, we are expecting some significant guidance to come from the Oakland County Health Division. And we are committed to, uh, cooperating and following the requirements and guidelines, uh, related to the screening of staff and students. Any confirmed cases of COVID, we know that we will assist with contact tracing, notification to staff, students, and families of positive cases, and we'll do that all in compliance with confidentiality laws. Um, we've already begun to draft processes, uh, uh, template letters, um, and flow charts to determine what communications go out when. But like I said earlier, there's going to be some additional guidance that comes from Oakland County Health Division, uh, to inform those processes. So we've made the decision that we're going to participate in these ways. We've made the decision around these quote-unquote policies, but we're still developing those procedures as we await additional information from the, uh, experts. Next slide, please. Finally, some school-based procedure recommendations from the roadmap in order to limit contact, um, and reduce exposure rates, uh, or potential exposure rates. Uh, roadmap recommends or requires family members or other guests are not allowed in the school except under extenuating circumstances determined by districts and school officials. And in cases where we do have adult guests entering the building, they will be screened for symptoms, very similar to how staff is screened. They will wear a facial covering and have to wash or sanitize hands prior to entering the, the school building proper, um, after they've, uh, been checked in the, in the entrance office. Um, we are required to keep strict records, including date and time, of any non-school employees or visitors coming in, entering and exiting the building, uh, so that we can assist with contact tracing, should that become, uh, something that we need to do for that particular case. I think that is it for the policy and procedure recommendations at this point. Um, we continue our work, um, and we'll have additional procedures developed as time comes. And then we'll rely on our communications team to help us communicate that out.
I just have a comment or a question. Uh, I believe that I had heard that we were, that Oakland County was going to provide nurses to the districts in Oakland County. Is that still the case?
Uh, sure, I can take that. Um, Ms. Flaherty Graham is also working closely with the team at Oakland Schools regarding it. To my knowledge, most all of the nurses for the county program have now been hired or, or interviewed and secured. We expect to hear, um, a direct, uh, link between the two nurses, I believe, that are being assigned to Royal Oak Schools directly and then just how they work under, uh, as staff members of ours. But two full-time nurses dedicated to the entire district, uh, and would, uh, of course, help us with the CDC guidelines and those coming from Oakland County. There were a number of questions in the, uh, parent, we had collected questions ahead of time from parents before this meeting, and there were a number with regard to, um, exactly what would trigger a classroom closure, uh, a wing closure, a grade closure with exposures as they come. And I, I think, Mr. Jeremini, those, that's also a part of what you were alluding to with following the guidelines, um, given to us by the Health Department, you know, notification. But there, there may also be some steps we would need to take to close certain programs or classrooms with high numbers of cases reported.
Absolutely, and as I said, we expect, I know that all the county health departments are working, uh, quickly to get their guidance to their, uh, respective constituents. And so we're waiting for that before we make, uh, final determinations on processes for that.
Mr. Jeremini, this is Patrick. Can you clarify, so just looking at this slide, it says, "Family members or other guests are not allowed in the school except under extenuating circumstances." Then the next statement says, "Adult guests entering the building will be screened." So what types of guests would be allowed in the building? Because I, statement number one would, would tell me that there are no guests allowed in the building, family or guests allowed in the building.
So as I said, this language comes from the, the state's roadmap. Um, and so we're using those to guide our, our recommendations and the language that we use moving forward so that we're consistent with requirements. Uh, I don't believe statement one prohibits. Um, it says absolutely no visitors, but rather it says it's going to be extremely, extremely limited and those situations will be determined by district administrators and school administrators. Um, if we have a situation, uh, where there's a sick child or an injured child and we need a parent to come pick them up, um, if it's not severe, if we're not, if it's not an ambulance-type situation, um, then we would have them in the building. Um, there may be scenarios where it may be most appropriate to have a parent in the building for a meeting with a student. All of those, um, are supposed to be extremely limited, um, but things that may occur. As you heard from Ms. Flaherty Graham earlier, uh, with regard to, um, IEP team meetings, um, there may be situations where parents may request meetings, uh, in person rather than virtually, in phases four, five, and six. Um, and so this would be one of those exceptions. The second piece here, the second bullet is meant to indicate, if you do have adult guests in the building for some reason, they must be screened for symptoms, wear a facial covering, et cetera. Um, this would also apply to, um, ancillary staff or, uh, for example, construction workers, um, individuals that might be in the building for other purposes. Um, we would have to make sure that we're screening them and making sure that all those pieces are applying to them as well.
That does fill out the question, so as we have, we continue to have, you know, construction completed in our schools, is the expectation that any construction, um, would not be, or occurring at times when we have students in the building?
Sorry, I couldn't necessarily hear the question. Sorry, I couldn't necessarily hear the question.
I think it was around construction and having construction ongoing while we had students in the building, and we would follow our regular procedures with that. We generally move construction to second shift when we do not have students in the building, and we don't want to disrupt any learning that's going on in the building.
And it is likely that the construction projects that are not completed by the start of school, should we have these staggered days, having a day where we're closed either Wednesday or Friday, we would have our staff working possibly remote or onsite. We would also then be able to schedule maybe some of our construction during that time. Again, highly limited contact, and they all have been following the safety protocols and screening procedures the entire summer. They've been working even without students in the building, just for the sake of their fellow construction team members, as well as our district staff that may be working in the buildings this summer. And they've been following all the processes you've been hearing about this evening.
Just one more question, sorry. If a staff member comes to the building and plans on being there for the day for instruction purposes, has a fever, cannot enter the building, so you know, that's not, you know, we can't, at that point, what would happen? So you know, the parents are expecting their children are going to remain there. Is there an expectation that we'll be able to get a sub for that day for that? Because we can't combine a class with another class, I assume. You know, just, I'm trying to think in terms of families. Does that mean the students, you know, wouldn't be able to stay in school, or what would be a plan for that, so his families know how to plan accordingly?
Question.
I'll let Mr. Walensky answer that, but I would like to add at the end some additional questions that we received regarding subs, so if you want to answer that immediately though, now, Mr. Walensky.
Yeah, that's a good question. We're currently recruiting daily consistence rooms for every building. So we're in the process of identifying people that are comfortable, or, you know, every school has a particular sub that requests that building and then knows, so we're going to assign subs to each building currently. For, oh, there you go. Another part of the operations part of this plan was staff work responsibilities, and there were some basic ones that were recommended in the roadmap that we're going to do. But whatever we ask staff to do, it was also recommended we work on and we plan with our education association. And I chaired this subcommittee as the Director of Human Resources. I also invited Grant Walton, the Executive Director representing Royal Oak from the Michigan Education Association to join our committee, and he's been very helpful. Actually provided with, provided me with an MEA-approved survey that we sent to all staff that other districts are using. We adapted it to fit our needs, and that was really helpful. Some of the basic things staff will be asked to do are monitor student arrival and dismissal protocols and discourage congregating. I don't know that we'd even have to ask staff to do that, but that's one of the things they'll be asked to do. To remind students about safety procedures such as facial coverings, hand washing, and social distancing. As teachers do every day, they're constantly reminding students about what is expected of them, and I think this is going to be a constant reminder and enforcement for teachers to make this work. And then finally, to conduct their own daily self-examinations, including temperature checks prior to coming to work. Next slide, please. So one of the things in the plan was also that we redeploy as necessary and to protect the health of those with high risks. Part of the survey that we sent to staff yesterday, and last I checked, I already had over 300 responses, was a question that, "Are you of a high-risk category?", and it was confidential. "Or do you have a member of your immediate family that you reside with that is of high risk?" We need to take that into consideration, and if possible, we deploy those people to work virtually. Earlier, you asked how we might staff our virtual academy. My thinking is these staff that are of a high-risk category or have a loved one that is can request that assignment. Or we can in some way work with them to do all of their instruction virtually, and that's something we need to work through. The survey was also meant to just assess concerns, preferences that staff have. I have not had a chance to go through and look at all the data, but there was a lot, a lot from the staff that we received. Any questions? Next slide, please. So Joe Yuanis, who is the Principal of Adams Elementary, chaired this next subcommittee, and Joe, are you with us and able to talk about the communications portion of our work?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Mr. Walensky. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about this. I'm Joe Yuanis, the Principal at Adams Elementary and Early Childhood Center. Part of the work that my subcommittee did was the communications. A lot of what we've seen tonight is a lot of new policies and procedures that have to be put in place, so the communications subcommittee really focused on three types of communications or three groups of three groups in our school community that would have to receive these communications, and it would be the school-based communications. And our subcommittee is going to work on developing communications for staff and for students based on many of the procedures that we're going to be implementing: facial covering and daily screenings, symptomatic students and some of those things. So the other component is family-based procedural communication, so we really wanted to take some time to draft some communications to our families around many of the policies and procedures that will be put in place. One of the ones that we anticipate being a big one, especially at the elementary level, is the building visitors. As we have a lot of parents who enter elementary buildings and help out in the classrooms and just help out in general, so that'll be something that our subcommittee will draft a communication to go to families. And then Mr. Walensky also spoke a little bit about the staff work responsibilities. The subcommittee, the communication will, communications will also be developing staff communications regarding redeployment and reassignment of staff, some daily health monitoring component revision of students during arrival and dismissal. So those are some important components that are part of this plan that our subcommittee has really been working on developing those communications for those three main groups in our school community.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kathy Avella, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, and my co-chair on the Facilities Task Force is Pat Murphy, our Operations Director with the district. In addition to Pat and I, we had 20 other staff members that were involved in our task force, and they included the Food Service Director, administrators, teachers, support staff, and and I think that's about it. Some of the tasks that we were charged with looking at were evaluating securing cleaning supplies, devices that included PPE. Some of those include masks, gowns, gloves, face shields as they are required, plexiglass dividers, and dust shields where those are also required. In some of those cases, it's in the, with the students that have IEPs. We looked at procedures for cleaning and staffing needs, evaluating and recommending meal servings, needs and recommendations around transportation, and signage for hand washing, social distancing, and things of that nature. Next slide, please. Some of the recommendations from the Facilities Committee for you to consider are, as operations already pointed out, masks are to be worn at all times by staff and students K through 12. What we would, what we have said or would like to see is students will be asked to provide their own clean face covering each day. The district will provide masks to those that need one. Staff will be issued four cloth coverings. A clean one is to be worn each day. For hand washing, which was also a recommendation out of operations, was all classrooms with sinks will have soap available. Each classroom will have hand sanitizer, and these items that I'm talking about have already been secured and are in the district. All hand dryers that are in our restrooms have been disabled and replaced with hand towels, and signs reinforcing the hand washing have already been installed. And in addition, there are also signs that remind people of the six-foot social distancing and other items like that. For the ventilation system, I'm going to ask Mr. Murphy to please go through this part of our presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Patrick Murphy. I'm the Operations Manager for Facilities and Transportation for the District. I'm happy to be here to help out through this workshop and to talk specifically about the, our HVAC requirements. We have followed recommendations from the CDC as well as other professional organizations for the HVAC industry. And our primary objective here was to, is twofold, is to increase the airflow and the input of outside air into our facilities and to also, at the same time, increase filtration. Filtration is rated, filters or filter media is rated by a system called MERV, which is roughly translated to mean minimum effective reporting value. It's on a scale from one to 20. The CDC is recommending that any filtration media that is used in a school district setting, or an office setting for that matter, to be bumped up as high as you can to a MERV 13. We have been able to secure samples of additional heavier, more efficient media to test out on our systems. All of our systems that are able to handle MERV 13 filters are either currently fitted with them, or we're waiting for the next shipment to come in, and they will be fitted with MERV 13 filters. The additional pieces of equipment that cannot, cannot take a MERV 13 filter will take the highest MERV rating we can get. We have to be sensitive to certain pieces of equipment because there gets to be a point where you get diminishing returns. The higher the filtration, the less effective the airflow is in that classroom, which is something we do not want to affect. And there is a point where the filtration can be so effective that it really puts a strain on the high-voltage motors of the equipment. So once again, through our filter supplier, we were able to get some samples in advance and test a lot of these pieces out. And we believe we have the best effective combination of highest MERV rating possible, and we also have set all of our HVAC equipment to bring in 100% outside air.
Mr. Murphy, you want to talk a little bit about windows, the windows and the fan usage in rooms, please?
Yes. One of the suggestions from the Governor's roadmap was to open windows where possible, and I believe that in talking with other industry professionals and other, my peers from school districts, that's really to address schools that have not adequate or less than adequate ventilation. Our systems are designed to be a closed system, and a lot of our windows are fixed. There are some windows that can open up, but if we do open up windows, we're going to have problems with comfort. We're going to increase risk to folks that have asthma issues, and our recommendation is that we operate as we are set up right now with bringing 100% outside air without opening additional windows. What else was it you asked me to talk about, Mrs. Bella?
That was exactly it, the fans and the windows. I think you did that.
Fans as well. Fans are going to be minimized. We only have one student that requires a fan because of a medical condition, and that student, we are looking into providing a personal device to where it won't affect the airflow for the other students in that room.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we proceed with our presentation?
Mrs. Patrick, I think this might be directed towards you. So so we're asking that all K through 12 wear face coverings masks. So who's, how are we going to, in today's world, there are individuals that are not of the same philosophy. How are we going to address that if somebody presents and doesn't want to wear a face cover?
So when they're on site and coming into the school, based on our recommendation, it is going to be a requirement for entry. And so we will handle that individually with each of the families, but that will be something that we will ask them to abide by by being in the classroom. Of course, much like other public spaces and notifications, you see with an extenuating circumstance or a health issue, we will work directly with that family, how to best coordinate their learning and also meet this guideline that we have recommended to us, which is face masks. One of the reasons for asking students to bring their own is, you know, we've had a few months now as an entire society of wearing masks. Students prefer, you know, some students prefer different ones with elastic or ties and pull up over the face. Some students are going to be much more comfortable using the mask they've been using throughout the summer as opposed to something new that we might hand out. We will certainly provide masks to anyone that needs them, based on our orders and things that we have. But we think just for personal preference and also for personal responsibility for the washing and cleaning of those, that the students would come in with their own. And we're hearing from many parents that that's something that's become part of their routines at home and will become something that they, you know, pack every day to come to school as they can. But in terms of your original question, we'll deal with each of those cases as we can, but it will be widely publicized and communicated that a requirement is a face mask for our students and staff.
I just have one quick question. So we have all these items on site already, or we're confident that we can get them throughout the year?
We do. Mr. Murphy started early, probably, I'm thinking, late May, early June, and began ordering some of this equipment that we were going to need and started putting plexiglass in place where it was necessary. So they have us set up very well for the beginning of the school year.
Next slide, please, Paula.
Mr. Murphy, based on the 100% outside air, is that driving a positive system? And are we rebalancing all the buildings, or do we need to?
We're going to look at rebalancing the buildings. Jeff, right now, I would say we're probably erring on the side of a positive system instead of a negative system.
Absolutely.
We're going to continue to look at. But right now, we had to make sure that we could effect that change to 100% outside air and get the filtration to where we need it to be, and we're continuing to do that work to get the building in balance.
Is that going to drive any problems once we start heating?
It's going to drive cost problems.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for those questions. Food service. Our plan is that K-5 will eat in the classrooms as instruction had already reviewed, that they'll remain within their classroom throughout the day. We've already ordered the equipment that food service will need to provide the meals in the classroom, and Mr. Walensky already covered the staff and how they'll redeploy the staff, so we've thought through some of those requirements already. K-12, we were going to spread students into large areas throughout the building, limiting the menu and with plexiglass in the survey, and I believe that was the question Mrs. Van Heesma asked earlier, was how we were going to do that. So we were looking at potentially the gathering place at Royal Oak Middle School, the mezzanine areas of the gymnasium at Royal Oak High School, but we will certainly work closely with the administrators within those buildings to try to spread out those tables and where that will work best for them. Some of the other things that have been, might be an opportunity for kids to eat outside where possible, so they'll be able to social distance outside. I'm going to ask Mr. Murphy to review the enhanced cleaning services that we have planned.
Okay, as most of the board is aware, we have our custodial and maintenance service provider. We have contract with them to provide an enhanced cleaning service. The enhanced cleaning services will include additional more highly-trained personnel to operate specialized equipment, use specialized materials. All existing custodial and maintenance staff will be retrained as to CDC best practices. The contract we are entering into with our service provider will also include all of our communication pieces, bathroom signage, six-foot social distancing signage. It's a complete package that comes with this enhanced cleaning service. As I said, we're going to retouch, we're going to retrain the existing staff. We're going to be staffed to be able to clean all touchpoints bathrooms as prescribed by the required section for the return-to-school roadmap by the Governor. And we will be poised also to sanitize frequently-used spaces and surfaces. We're going to be using specialized equipment, low-voltage. We're going to be using specialized equipment, low volume disinfectant sprayers and hydrostatic sprayers as well. The advantage Kathy and I just are getting the last bits of the contractual language in, but we are opting for, and we gave you an idea of what the, the program might cost in a year's time. But we're going to enter into the contract on an hourly basis. So as we fluctuate from phase three to phase four to phase five, we can be a little bit more nimble in terms of how we staff. If we need to upstaff, if we need to decrease staff. It allows a pricing structure for us to, to manage the situation in a very fluid environment.
Mr. Murphy, do you want to review a little bit of the cleaners that are going to be used and that they're going to be used around people with no problems?
Yeah, the, the cleaners that are all going to be used are on the EPA and FDA approved list for mitigating COVID-19 or SARS viruses. All these materials and chemicals, if you will, are approved by the EPA and FDA and are safe to be using in and around buildings where children are present. As long as they folks are trained and apply it correctly, according in a manner consistent with the label, there's no concern to have students around any of those materials.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just a question, sorry. So it says K to five will be eating in their classrooms, which makes sense. But so is the expectation that the teacher is going to be staying in the classroom with those students?
Right. And that's what Mr. Valinsky had talked about redeploying the staff. And that would be where we might look at is having other adults supervise those children so that the teachers do have the ability to take their non-duty lunch. We do want to make sure that those staff members get the break that they deserve as well. For classroom cleaning, we've already talked a little bit about that the students would, would stay in their cohort all day. So each one of those classrooms will be cleaned at the end of each day. Six through eight has limited movement, so ABM will clean between their classes. And those classes aren't going to be hourly. They talked a little bit about too, about how those students are going to be moving about the building. So it's each time that the students would change, we would have to clean those, those classrooms. For transportation, masks are going to be required to be worn at all time, times during transportation. And buses will be cleaned between each route. Next slide, please. So one of the other things we looked at was water. So we're going to ask all staff and students to supply their own water bottle when they come into the buildings each day. All the drinking fountains have already been disabled. Water bottle fillers are available in all of our buildings. And at now has also been installed at the Royal Oak High School Athletic Plaza. So students might, and staff might have to plot a little bit about making sure that they stop at the water bottle filler on the way to their next class. But they, there are plenty available in each of our buildings. As far as restrooms, we're going to be closing or each of every other sink so that we can maintain social distance within the restrooms and limit the number of students that are in there at one time. Some of the other signage that already has been installed is for hand washing and social distancing. And Mr. Murphy covered that there are some additional signage pieces that go along with that ABM contract. One of our recommendations was that technology, assign a device to each student. That would help with the cleaning between classes, but also any devices that are used or shared would be cleaned between usage. Next slide, please. So the ongoing work of the Facilities Committee is to evaluate processes regularly and update as necessary. So as things change or more information that we know, we'll change our processes as needed. Reordering supplies is needed and keeping those supply chain options open. You can imagine that there's been a lot of PPE needed across all segments at this point. So we are ordering from different places. So we are making sure we're keeping a good list of places that we can order from and making sure we, we always have that available to us. And we're prepared to support all fasts to the district as needed. So those are our ongoing work plans. Are there any questions remaining for Facilities before we move on to Wellness?
Just real quick, Mr. Murphy, too. I know some of the cleaning protocols, like some of the products, as you watch the evolution of time, you know, some of them, they're not recommending anymore and things of that nature. So how quickly can we get supplies? Like if there's a change that they, a recommendation, a CDC recommendation comes out that we should be using, you know, supply A, B, C, whatever. How quickly can we get those types of products if there's a change to CDC protocols?
At this time, I feel pretty confident in our supply chain. We're dealing with primarily three main suppliers. However, one thing you should take confidence in is that the, the products that we're using have been on the FDA and EPA approved product list for battling viruses of this particular type for quite a while. And they're pretty much a mainstream in the commercial cleaning and hospital industry. And we have a very adequate supply on hand.
All right. If there are no further questions, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sam Lynch and I'm the principal at Oakland Elementary. And I have been chairing the Wellness Task Force along with John Griswak, the principal at Upton, and Karen Powell, the, one of the assistant principals at the high school. We have also been very fortunate that, similar to the other task force, we had a, a high level of volunteerism. We've had 30 staff members from a variety of disciplines join up with us. We have teachers, counselors, social workers, paraprofessionals. And they've really been pretty great. We split up into four subcommittees, which I'll talk about in a second. And we've been meeting very regularly with the chairs of those, actually meeting and communicating very regularly with the chairs of those subcommittees. So without further ado, I will start with the first of those, and that's our response team. And our tasks have been to identify the roles and responsibilities. I should also note that, by the way, that there, and this has been alluded to by a couple of my colleagues, there is a lot of overlap with the other committees, probably especially operations and facilities. And you'll see that as I go through these. But our, our tasks for Wellness to identify the roles and responsibilities for people, both the district and building level. To designate a mental health liaison in the schools, in each school, that will work across the school with kids and with families. And then with public health agencies as, and community partners as needed. And also to develop guidelines for referral process at each level, appropriate support persons at each level, and then establish a comprehensive crisis management plan, all the above. And these are things that we've actually, we, a lot of this we've had in place, but not under the umbrella of COVID. So nor of the umbrella of having to do so much virtually. So it's, it's a, taking care of kids physically and emotionally is in the wheelhouse of all of our educators. And we're just figuring out some different and more appropriate ways to do it right now, given, given the state we're in. Next slide, please. Thank you. The next subcommittee was resources and supports for both physical and emotional wellness. And this is where we had to identify our resources, both that we already have within Royal Oak and what is available to us outside. Where in doing so leverage the Department of Education resources, along with the county resources. Compile and regularly update a list of these resources available to both staff, students, and actually parents as well. This can be provided in conjunction with screening activities as we're constantly trying to ascertain who needs supports. And then have those references available for all of our stakeholders as well. And also make sure that the communication channels are, are clear to all of our stakeholders to address mental health concerns. With regards to really anything, but obviously, as I said earlier, we are looking right now with stuff that is more specific to COVID-19 because that is not something we were dealing with a year ago. Although we have had to deal with issues in the past, mental health issues in the past. Next one was professional learning, our professional development team. We have, we are working on identifying a calendar of events. Our, our, our focus is a, is a little more narrow than the professional learning you learned about earlier because it has to do more with wellness. And it'll be a combination of specific events as needed and yet planned along with resources that are available for access on their own time. Quite a bit of it will be virtual, if not all. And the, the potential opportunities as listed there are HIPAA and FERPA compliance, social emotional learning, trauma-informed best practices, best ways to identify at-risk kids, referral protocols, and then the self-care and resilience for both staff and students. And, and I don't think I referenced earlier, but taking care of our staff too is a big focus of what we're doing because this is, this is traumatic for everybody. Next, communication access and equity. And again, it's exactly what it says. We want to be sure that we are really with all stakeholders and also making sure that everybody has equal access to the resources. Part of this thing, it means a health screening for all of our students led by a trained professional to ascertain what kids are in, in need sooner rather than later. Communicating the guidelines to all of our staff on the referral process so they know exactly and clearly what they have to do if they have concerns about a student that may be struggling. Similarly, ongoing reporting protocols, both for physical and mental health. And then also communicating with parents and guardians in a variety of ways. The transition information, including destigmatization of the COVID, of COVID-19. You know, what, what are real issues, what are not real issues? Understanding normal behavior because, you know, it's going to be, when, when we have people back in schools, they're going to be looking at things a little bit differently. And we want to be sure that we are understanding and helping people to understand that. And general best practices for talking through trauma with kids, which is something that we've, that a lot of our buildings have been working on previously, anyway, just not under the umbrella of COVID. Then again, as alluded to earlier, positive self-care strategies that promote health and wellness, all while ensuring this equity of access, resources and support for, for all of our, all of our students and probably should say all of our families as well. Next, please. And here forward, our, our recommendations, making sure, and this is getting a lot of overlap, making sure that we have proper protocols in place. And this might include PP, which is, you know, already, already taken care of. Thermometers as needed, sanitary procedures as needed. And again, operations and facilities is already, you know, well underway with that. Targeted resources in place to educate students on health and wellness. And this could be both physical or with regards to social, emotional. Again, might be working with kids on hand washing and proper social distancing in terms of the physical, but also, you know, teaching resilience and helping kids through trauma with regards to their social, emotional wellness. And along those lines, making sure that school social work slash counseling support is available for, for all of our students and families in need. You know, all, all, all grade levels, no matter what, if they need support, we're going to have it for them. Our continuing work, our subcommittees are going to continue to meet weekly to both work on the strongly recommended tasks, but also to identify kind of what we don't know yet, you know, because you don't know what you don't know. And as stuff comes up, we want to be sure that we address it in a timely manner to continue to identify those resources and supports for, for everybody and, and work on that professional learning calendar as we talked about. And also make sure that our communication networks are, are clear with our families so that they have what they need. And I believe that's the end of our slides. I don't know if John or Karen have anything they want to chime in with. Or if there are any questions.
Mr. Lynch, Mrs. Fitzpatrick, I know last year we had added additional social workers throughout and within our district. And, you know, we're going to be challenged, right? Because we don't know what, what families have been going through the last few months. They, they may have had experienced loss of loved ones and friends due to the illness. How, how many social workers do we have within the district? And then also, the high school being 100% virtual, how are we going to continue to offer this emotional, social support to the high schoolers as well? On their, from remote?
Well, I, I think the high schools, again, at least, or, um, so in, in the, in the Phase Four Plan, we actually have some dedicated time allotted on those Mondays where the kids would also be engaging in those, you know, those six classes as a launch day in the afternoon to, that they can engage with our support service staff as well. So there is some time allotted in there. And then in addition to that, on those Tuesdays through Friday with that AB schedule that we were proposing, students would be able to access the building for support staff support during that time as well.
So I'll ask Ms. Flaherty Graham to answer the question of exactly how many social workers we employ across the district, either full-time or part-time. But with regard to how we'll deliver these services across all of our schools, it's going to also depend on the amount of hours that our social workers would need to meet the needs of the students with IEPs, as well as the social workers that we now have hired, the general education students. And then how does that combine with other support staff, restorative justice, restorative practices, coach, our counselors? You know, how will we give a support system of all kinds of adults to support our kids? So right now, we're not certain if that means hiring or making a recommendation to hire additional support staff or if we believe that the demands and the schedule match up with the existing staff that we have. So, Ms. Graham?
Sure. We have, I'm counting on my fingers right now. We currently have nine social workers in our district. We have two at the high school and who are in specialization and one is allocated for the general ed population. So a total of three. We have two full-time social workers at the middle school and we have four social workers that are shared between our six groups at that level.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick, I know the county has provided additional nursing to Oakland County Schools. Is there any proposal out there for any additional social worker support, your knowledge?
So to my knowledge, I have not heard that. Maybe Ms. Graham knows that. But I have not heard that in terms of adult support. Right now, they've been focusing on, you know, we haven't had nurses in schools in years. It dwindled in my tenure as a principal, anyway, with even that level of support we got from the county directly via a nurse to our school. So that was a huge, and we're very appreciative of that undertaking as a collaborative between Oakland Schools and the Oakland County itself. So I don't know of any discussions regarding for the deployment of other support staff, Ms. Graham, schools?
You know, I'm uncertain of that right now. I do know that the school nurses have been fired, have been going through extensive training over the course of the last two weeks. They've been in close contact with the Oakland County Health Department. I can tell you that they have done, they have a plethora of research. I can tell you that they have done, they have a plethora of resources available to us. I've made several calls to them and asked, you know, very explicit questions about bringing our kids into school and, and they are, they have a nurse-on-call program. They have, they're right there. And so I know that Oakland Schools employs a nurse who's responsible for coordinating services for the entire county. And she's an Oakland Schools employee and is in direct contact with all the resources there. So, you know, in the weeks to come, additional services may surface for us. At this time, it is designated as the, the two public nurses for the district.
I just want to say I really appreciate that this component is included in the plan. And I think it's really vital. And I just, again, want to express my appreciation.
I will take that as starting the next section, which is back-to-school extracurricular. My name is Angela Ashburn. I'm the Early Childhood Center Director. Our team was presented by pre-K to 12th grade teachers, administrators and support staff. And we had subcommittees within our group, the Early Childhood Center and Young Oaks Latchkey Athletics Clubs and Rentals. And we focused on the extracurricular roadmap. Early Childhood Center and Young Oaks Latchkey. If we are in Phase Three, the three and four-year-old childcare may remain open if all emergency protocols identified by the state are followed and in our enrollment levels are maintained. Great Start to Readiness Program, Early Childhood Special Education, Early Intervention and Walk-Ins will follow the elementary plan. Tuition preschool, blended tuition preschool, Latchkey would be closed as those students would not be in school. Phase Four and Five, Young Oaks Latchkey will be limited to groups of 50 in Phases Four and Five. We are able to distribute those groups within some licensed rooms that we have within. Young Oaks will be open to students on the dates the students are in session. Our Great Start to Readiness Program will follow the grant guideline. Tuition preschool, blended preschool, tuition preschool, all attend school on their days. So I think it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday for four-year-olds and Tuesday and Thursday for three-year-olds. They would still attend on those if they come for half-days. We must follow LAURA Licensing, which is the Licensing and Regulatory Affairs to the State of Michigan. Guidelines and Great Start to Readiness Program will follow any grant change, guidelines, changes. It's are expected tomorrow. We have another meeting. We meet pretty regularly. And next, Don Wachowski is going to talk to you about athletics.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mrs. Ashburn. In regards to athletics, our, our plan will continue to be and has been so far this summer to comply with all guidelines published by the Michigan High School Athletic Association as well as the National Federation of State High School Associations. With, with many of our scenarios that we're presenting this evening, it's, it's fluid and things can change and we're going to be prepared for those changes as need be. However, the, the guiding principles overall for athletics and the MHSAA approach is that we're going to play fall sports in the fall as scheduled. If conditions deem it necessary, we'll delay the start of some or all fall sports and practices and competitions. As of right now, our current start dates are August 10th, which would be football, and then August 12th for all other sports. If conditions only allow some sports, we'll play the lower-risk fall sports with higher-risk fall sports postponed until later in the calendar. Regardless of all those adjustments and accommodations, it's the goal of the Michigan High School Athletic Association to play three seasons. Those could be shortened seasons, but regardless, if we have to start fall, stop it. The goal is to pick it up at a later time. And by doing that, they're even open to the idea of possibly extending into the summer months as necessary. Pre-screening surveys within 24 hours of participation are required, as well as temperature checks on-site that's being done by our professional staff. We are wearing masks to the greatest extent possible, which pretty much means all the time except for high aerobic activity. And social distancing, of course, is going to continue to be emphasized. We are looking right now at this idea of spectator and fan attendance limitations. We know there will be limitations. We plan to follow state and local guidelines, but we're realizing that the idea of a, you know, 1,500 to 2,500 fan spectator varsity Friday night football game is probably not going to be in the plans for this year. So we are making sure we stay, pay special attention to those and adapt and adjust accordingly. Next slide, please.
Angela Ashburn, again. Part of our charge was also looking at clubs, fundraisers and rentals. Clubs may continue based on the indicators such as the current phase we are in, the ability to follow all the safety protocols, any of the board guidelines and administrative approval. For Phases One through Three, we would be virtual for clubs. For Phases Four and Five, we could have face-to-face, it would be allowed, virtual would, is recommended. Fundraisers may continue based on same guidelines as I just mentioned. Phases One through Three would be remote, virtual only. Phases Four and Five would be face-to-face allowed, remote and virtual recommended. Rentals will be eliminated or limited in Phases One through Four, no rentals allowed. In Phase Five, rentals are allowed following board guidelines and the Phase Five Michigan Roadmap guidelines. No offsite field trips are allowed in Phases One through Five.
As mentioned in a previous slide, with our spectator limitations at school events and sporting events, telecasting or live streaming definitely needs to be prioritized. And some things we're looking at right now are WOK expansion. This includes our student-based productions as well as station manager productions. Learning opportunities to be provided to our professional staff who plan to participate or lead live stream events. We want to make sure that they're equipped to be able to execute those in an appropriate manner. And of course, when we do something like that, we want to make sure we're reviewing all current permissions and restrictions and we're abiding by those in regards to telecasting or live streaming. Recession recommendations that should be conducted outside whenever possible. And once again, we're relying on that appropriate social distancing and cohorting of students. Building administrations will work with staff to develop a schedule. And some of our ongoing work is to research and recommend the implementation of a centralized district facility usage calendar that will promote, you know, transparency and communication among facilities, operations, custodial and users. That includes a clearly defined process for reserving facilities. We think that that's going to help many of the groups that have presented tonight just to work together and present the safest and best opportunities for our students and our coaches and our families. The one thing we wanted to add as well is that we know this is continued work. And so we have scheduled meetings on a weekly basis with our group and we will, you know, stay updated and provide information as needed.
Any questions for the extracurricular group, athletics or clubs or latchkey?
I, I have a question too. So, you know, the middle school and the high school have a lot of clubs and so I guess just general questions or comments about those. You know, and that's part of the whole social, emotional that this looks forward to. I know that requires additional cleaning protocol, kind of the whole thing, so any thoughts on that or additional permissions this time yet?
We do have, oh, go ahead. So, so I just said, we do have that virtual is recommended. So we are recommending based on that wellness, emotional connection that the clubs that do run are allowed to run even as we go in and out of the phases so that students can have that separate connection. And since the high school will be virtual at the start of school, there won't be anyone in classes. They may be going in to connect, but it will be, they'll be able to do some different things based on scheduling and cleaning protocol and the cleaning schedule that they have at the school. So we do want them to, it's going to be based on all of those pieces.
Couple of the subcommittees or these committees that have overlapped would be assigned rooms that would be for use after school hours if clubs were, you know, absolutely needing to be. And given that the high school's running somewhat of a schedule for appointments or for smaller groups of kids to come in, again, that's why we have this as, you know, under the supervision and approval by the building administrator as to how those might work. Again, I think our staff leaders of all the clubs and groups and teams are being very creative with how to keep as many of those things going for students. You know, it's a part of the full school experience as well as all the teaching and learning. And so we want those to continue as normally as possible. And we do have literally hundreds of clubs and things that our kids belong to and we know how important all that is to our students. So we'll try to get them to run as much as possible and, and, and in the safest way. Any other questions for that group? Okay, Mr. Brinkford, to our board members, we're closing in on the end of just about three hours of time. And I, I hope a few things that you're hearing or that you've heard tonight are with some very specific questions answered about how we intend to operate as the school year begins. I do have questions that came up from our parent questions but are not necessarily right. I want to make sure we're well answered during the presentations. But one of the things that we will need from the board in terms of moving forward is just impressions on the first choices, the first recommended choices for how school will run that was presented by our instruction team because really how that functions then is a, you know, a trickle-down and a domino effect to the rest of our committees in terms of response and other things that we put in place. So at this time, I, I would take questions or comments from the board regarding that elementary, middle and high school return-to-school schedules that were presented tonight.
I just, this is Gary Briggs. I just want to say, first of all, congratulations and thank you to our teachers and administrators and staff for all the work that they've put into this. It's incredible. This is all new territory for everybody and I just think that this should give a really good comprehensive understanding of what things are probably going to look like in the fall for parents who are unsure about what's going on. And I think that I want to commend you on taking everybody's insecurities and nervous parents on what is going to happen with their kids. And I think that these, these plans all show that we're thinking about students and our staff security first and foremost. I think that the first recommendations that on all of these are perfectly fine. I would suggest that we need to proceed with the utmost caution. And I, even, you know, I know parents say that we need to get kids into school and, you know, we need to, the problem is that school's not going to look like it. The things that, you know, those kids are going to be doing is going to be restricted once they get in school anyway because of the social distancing and the, and you're not going to be able to congregate for group learning and all those kinds of things for a while. And so I think taking the steps that we're doing as far as really beefing up and putting forward a virtual learning program that's going to be comprehensive is first and foremost. And I think that's what we need to look at. But thank you, Dan, everybody.
No, any other comments from the board?
I would just like to echo as well. This is Mrs. Van Heitzmaier. And I know I've been listening to a lot of the plans other districts are rolling out as well and everybody is trying to do, you know, the best they can. So it's, it's ever challenging, you know, health, health is, you know, a primary consideration as well. And, you know, nothing's going to be easy and, and things could change, right? So, but yeah, thank you. And we, and I think, you know, acknowledgement that in-person instruction is, you know, what we wish we had for every single student. It's, you know, not always possible at this point, so.
Mrs. Beer.
I, for one, was very impressed with how thorough the presentation was and how well-thought-out so many different aspects were. I really appreciate all the work that went into it. And I think the first choices sound like our best and most optimistic things that we can do to really connect with families and students the best we can. And I would encourage that we do what we can to move forward with those.
This is Anderson.
I agree. I think the first choices make the most sense. And I think that communicating to our families and our community is going to be really important in how we roll that out. But I do want to thank almost the 200 people, what, almost 200 people participated in this and that's amazing. So I want to thank all those people as well.
So I got a quick question, Mrs. Fitzpatrick. So our first choice for the middle school is an AB plan. If we think that the pandemic is going to get worse and we push back into Phase Three, does it make sense to go with the AB plan first choice, knowing that we will potentially step back?
So I'm going to begin to answer and then I'm going to ask Mr. Coligan also to, to chime in based on his presentation. We learned from the spring that one of the things we missed was being with our students in general and with the school year did not close normally. The same will be true now coming into a new school. So we asked about transition plans of fifth graders, you know, moving into the middle school now. They did prioritize as a team, some face-to-face instruction safely as possible was, was our goal. And that's why you saw the first recommendation as some face-to-face instruction. If we do move to Phase Three, and we must, then we will close, but certainly we would have latitude to change our plans at any time regardless of the phasing for the, the state. Level Three or Phase Three, rather, from the state requires us to close, but we certainly would be monitoring our own circumstances in this area and in Royal Oak specifically regarding it. But I, I believe the prioritization of that student instructional piece wherever possible was, was a high priority. So if you're still on the call, Coligan?
Yeah, I'm still on the call. Hi. So yes, I think briefly said, like, we are, we are definitely building a plan with the first thought being, being, being really well structured to handle virtual learning. You know, I think in September of 2019 had someone told us that, you know, hey, by April, we might not have school in person. We would have probably created a plan that had a virtual learning class. And I think now, knowing that that's something that has to be something we consider in 2021, we have built a schedule that is going to be most successful for kids to get quality time with teachers and build those connections and build those deeper learnings that we didn't quite get a chance to do, really, to be honest, in the, in the spring. We had to struggle and, and our teachers did an amazing job of bringing in really awesome asynchronous opportunities and they're chomping at the, like, they want to go into live instruction. So we want to provide the best-case scenario for them to get the live instruction and we consider it to be an awesome privilege if we can bring some kids in to in-person instruction as well through that.
Thank you. And I agree that in-person is the way to go if we can protect our students. That's really the key. Any other questions from the board? Any other comments from the board? Mr. Carton.
I just wanted to add my thanks to all, everybody that worked on this. It's thorough, diligent, and it's probably the best-looking new normal we can have. Maybe not quite what we want, but I agree, this is probably what it needs to look like and I'm for it.
Any other comments from the board? So I see none, but I would really also like to echo my associates' words that this was very detailed for a very complex, multifaceted situation that we're exposed to. So thank you all very much, to the whole team. I appreciate all your efforts in putting this together.
So what, what I would proceed with now, which was the last slide on the presentation and, and you don't have and, and I, you don't have to show it there, sorry Phil, I think I have it memorized. But, um, we do want to now, following tonight's meeting, we'll next, take the next few days to develop a concrete timeline, summarize these recommendations that have been made so that, um, you know, all 5,200 students, families are aware of what our district plan is. Uh, and, and using some of those graphic organizers that were out there as well as, as some of the commonly asked questions, present that to the community, um, which we also would do at the same time as presenting that virtual academy signup that we talked about. We did have hundreds of questions that came in last week, thanks to the parents that took the survey ahead of time and allowed us to tweak our presentation. There are questions to make sure that we hit most of those. I'd like to go through just a few key points, uh, questions that I read through that may or may not have been as clearly answered in the presentation, and some of them were pretty specific. We did our best to cover all questions, but I'm sure we missed a few along the way. So we will certainly continue dialogue with our, our families. The sub situation was addressed and, and while we're being proactive in hiring district level subs and building level subs that will commit to working with Royal Oak regularly, even before they're needed necessarily, um, we have a sub issue in public education. Finding substitute teachers is a smaller and smaller pot each year without a global pandemic. And so that's the strain that that puts on people that would typically sub for us maybe as a part-time job or after retirement from education. Some of those might be the very same people that will no longer be available, which also would dwindle the pot as much, you know? So we're going to be faced with that as a reality. You know, where will we be if we cannot get subs? Um, we, we are going to work on that and that redeployment bullet that Mr. Wilensky talked about will be essential for us to meet that need. We did, um, talk a little bit about protocols within the school. If, if we are face-to-face at any of the levels and students are there, um, principals know their buildings inside and out. And so they'll be making the recommendations regarding which doors to enter in and out of. Uh, many of our schools have exterior doors, um, that will utilize as much as possible to also limit any hallway traffic or congestion at certain doors and also staggering times. We didn't talk a lot about start times for school, but, um, we'll definitely take a close look at schedules and spreading students out as they enter. Uh, and that'll be part of, uh, building communication to families of exactly what to expect when they arrive to school, should they be there for in-person instruction. Also, we will, uh, develop as part of all of our plans, what we do to indicate closure. You know, when would a normal classroom close if cases rise? When would we move out of the state phasing and how would we need to communicate that to our families? So communication will be essential, uh, as any of the conditions you've heard about tonight will change. Um, one parent asked about whether or not a certain, one of their children could enroll in the virtual academy while the others follow the schedule at the school. And that's absolutely true. Um, the, the enrollment for the virtual academy is not by family, it's by child. And so it would be up to individual families to make those choices for their, their children and, uh, the ages of their children, I'm sure, and, and their needs will be all considered. We, we will follow the phase that the state is in, uh, come September 8th. But as you heard tonight, our plans cover all phases. So we owe the state the assurance that we've covered every phase that the state could be in and how schools would operate. But if on September 7th, there's a shift that comes from the state level that does not align with what our plan was, we also will need to shift. And so that, that the date that we, um, would follow would be at any time, day before school or day of school. There've been some questions about how to test staff members on a regular basis individually. That's also part of consulting with our nurse that will be assigned. And also we expect that to be a specific recommendation and plan for Oakland County from the Health Department. Um, I've spoken with our Oakland County Superintendent, uh, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson on a regular basis, and she has talked about ways to make sure that, um, our staff in the public schools have access to testing. And then what is the recommended, um, timeframe for being tested and, and those requirements? So we're following the Health Department closely on that. I thought a unique comment by one of the parents was with regard to returning to school, if we're face-to-face at all, following longer breaks at home. You know, the reality is we cannot control what happens in individual homes or how people move about in the community between days of school. But certainly after being home for a long period of time or traveling, uh, what would be, uh, rules or restrictions and policies we'd have in place for that return? Uh, I thought that was a unique question, and I, I definitely will make sure that our subcommittees address that with families and inform them of what our policies are regarding that. Developmental kindergarten children are going to be included in what their kindergarten counterparts are doing for planning. Um, so whatever the individual plan is for all kindergarten aged children in the, the district, the DK students specifically would follow kindergarten planning. And then, you know, last but not least is we've had so many parents comment on that survey and then other that I've received about how our PTAs want to help and how our organizations that support our district with Roya or Blessings or our Education Foundation and how they also want to help us. And so, um, I will work with our administrators very closely and then also closely with those organizations so that the help that they've given us so far is so appreciated. But we also recognize that there may be some unique needs moving into this school year uh, and how they may be able to, to help us with that. So I appreciate all of the parents that offered that up in the survey in terms of how they could help with, you know, masks and other specialized equipment we might need and, and other, um, protocols we have to put in place. So we, we absolutely appreciate that as well, and we will follow up with those groups. I think that addressed between our presentation tonight and that little rundown, I, I think I've checked off most of the outstanding questions that we saw in the survey. So unless there are further questions from the board regarding anything we've presented tonight, I think we're, we're ready for the next item on the agenda, Mr. Brinker.
Thank you. Any last questions or comments from the board? I see none.
Oh, you saw me.
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much to everybody that was involved in this presentation and all the behind the scenes volunteering staff that worked on these subcommittees and committees. And, uh, thank you. It was a lot of work in the summertime, but thanks for all your work. I know that the kids of Royal Oak will surely benefit.
Thank you, Mrs. Sykes. And I'm checking the screen on the bottom. I don't see any further requests. With that, we will move on to the next item, and it's public comments. To make a public comment request during this virtual board meeting, please use the raise your hand button to request to speak for public comment. When the board president reads your name, you will be unmuted and you will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and the address for the record. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogues. This is a time for members of the public to express their views on this topic. Questions that arise from public comment during this workshop shall be referred to the superintendent or her designee for review, study and response. Mr. Smith, would you help me check the list? But would anyone like to address the board?
Looks like we had about five people with their hands raised.
Gotcha. I see an Angie Twist.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I am Angie. I live on Woodsley. And my daughter will be going into high school in the ninth grade. I have a few questions regarding the proposed plan for the high school. Uh, it says in-person teaching is only on Mondays or that they're looking at that as like the, uh, springboard kind of. Um, so will there be help online for kids Tuesday through Friday? Because in the spring, there really wasn't, and that was a big issue. I know that they're saying that they can maybe come in, um, for two days out of that week, but I'm looking for help, um, like online. Is that going to be available? And when they are allowed to come in on those Tuesdays and Thursdays or whatever days they have, what are the protocols for how many kids are at a time? Are they said that, that there would be smaller groups, but what will that look like? And then my question is for the non-motivated child who needs more guidance. What are you doing for that child on the virtual, um, platform? And then, uh, my other questions, I think, were answered throughout the program. So yeah, those are my questions. It's, I'm kind of, it feels more like a hybrid than a virtual online. Maybe I'm wrong, um, but I'm just kind of confused.
So Mr. Brinker, I will work with the high school team to make sure that those specific questions are clarified, uh, in our plan documents that are communicated to our parents that Ms. Twist has raised.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your comments.
Can I make a suggestion too? And, uh, can we just put these comments on our website, uh, and just bullet them and then answer them, uh, as they come up for parents? I think it would be helpful.
Sure. I think one of the, uh, things that we wanted to do after this evening is of course make this presentation, uh, available. But instead of presenting it as options, we also wanted to change the slides to indicate the will of the board in the conversation tonight. In addition, we would run an FAQ so that as we received questions, we would also, Mr. Brinker or Mr. Briggs rather, um, supply questions or, and the answers to these frequently asked questions rather, sorry. And, and that's a good suggestion, and we will do that.
Thank you very much. I see another request, Gina Rozak.
Hi, um, I live on Midland and my daughter is, will be going into first grade at Oak Ridge. My question is with regards to recess and the wearing of masks. If they will be going for outdoor recess, will masks be required for outdoor recess? And also the second item is I just want to clarify the two options for elementary school is for, is option A was the four days in class and one day of virtual. And option B is the two days in class and three days virtual?
I'll just restate something that was during the presentation, and that is that, that the whole school would go with the same schedule. So the choice from elementary is for the, uh, two days, it face-to-face and three days virtual. That was the first recommendation for elementary, and that's the one that the board supported. Uh, it's not as if parents could pick one or the other. The second choice by the team was that four day. So again, uh, Mr. Brinker, I, I will make sure that we follow up and clarify the levels of the elementary plan as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, I see another request, Heather Lewis.
I am looking for, oh, there it goes. Okay, unmute.
Heather, can you hear us? Well, we'll swing back to Heather because I can't hear anything. So we'll go to another one and then come back in case she returns. I see a Jen Letkowsky.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, uh, Jen Letkowsky. I live on Woodland in Royal Oak. Basically, I just want to say, first of all, thank you so much, um, for the time and effort you guys have all put into this. I concede, having done presentations myself, how much time and effort has gone into it. And just thank you, appreciate that, because I know, um, it's very important to all of us that we get this right. I do want to just throw this out there for, uh, when you do communicate with the parents. We're interested in knowing what's going on with things like choir and band and orchestra. Will those things be continuing, um, because of some of the, you know, the singing and the, when the voices in the air that comes from that or the, um, bands playing and things like that? So, um, if you could let us know somehow about those, um, programs. And then lastly, is there, if there's any opportunity for parents to get involved with the LMS, uh, portion of your, um, project or the project? Um, you know, some of us parents might, would love to volunteer. I've done it myself, um, in my past work experience. So if there's any opportunity for parents to get involved to provide feedback and test, I know we would like that as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So I also see a Jennifer Bernie. Jennifer, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, beautiful. First of all, thank you, guys. I've watched about nine hours of two school districts. I'm coming out of Claussen School of Choice with a sixth grader. I'd like to know if there's any possible way to get a tour. That's a big deal. If not, I understand. Second to that, um, I would definitely volunteer to do the LMS perfectly fine. And then on a, maybe a sillier note, school pitchers. How might that look? That's all I got tonight.
Miss Bernie, can I ask you to identify where, where you live, just so that we can?
I live in Claussen.
In Claussen?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving down the list, I see a Kim Waterstrad. I'm sorry, a Kelly Waterstrad. Yes, we can.
I think. Um, so I'm Kelly. I live on Sycamore Avenue in Royal Oak. I am, um, a mother of two middle schoolers and a high schooler. So I just had two questions. Um, one was about the middle school, wondering, um, about the three classes. If I understood it correctly, it looks like there's three classes that the middle school kids will take. Two, I believe, in person and one online. And I was just wondering who chose, who's choosing those classes? And is there going to be, you know, will every kid have math, reading and writing? Or what classes will each kid take? And I guess who gets to choose? And my other question was, um, about high school. I have a freshman coming in and I was just wondering if there is going to be any sort of freshman orientation available? I think they were going to do something in the spring perhaps and weren't able to. So I was just wondering if there is going to be an opportunity for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a Leslie Walsh.
I'm not sure what device Leslie is on, but she doesn't have audio.
Okay. So we'll move on to Lisa Northy.
I am looking for Lisa Better. Unmuted.
Hi, good evening. I live on Brookwood in Royal Oak, and my daughter is going into fourth grade at Keller. And I want to first say thank you for this incredible presentation and including us, um, in this virtual, um, format. But I just wanted to ask, or maybe make a suggestion is, um, no matter what level of in-person, um, learning that their students will have, if it's not too much strain on the staff and the facility, if we can maybe get a virtua tour of what the classrooms are going to look like, what the school's going to look like, just for the wellbeing of our students, to be able to talk to them prior to, um, school starting, so they know what they're up against. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll move on to Lisa Semenkowski.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. The, the work you've put into this is tremendous, and everybody online is talking about how wonderful and detailed it is. So thank you. Um, my question is, do we know anything about OTAC? Um, my child is supposed to be doing three classes at the high school and the other half at OTAC. So I'm wondering if they're going to have any type of in-person there regardless if we're 100% virtual?
To answer her question, we, we will get that information out to parents, and, and I neglected to add Um, to answer her question, we we will get that information out to parents and and I neglected to add that there are several other very specialized programs that some of our students participate in uh in conjunction with our Royal Oak High School. And so, Mr. Jeremy, we will um with you and your staff work on making sure we have messages out regarding every one of those specialized programs for families.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. I see a Maria Pons.
Very cool child and a freshman in high school. Thank you for the presentation. And my question is regarding the virtual academy. You said during the presentation that a letter was going to be sent to families next week in the next couple of weeks. And families needed to be committed to it to it for a semester. But is the district going to provide families more information about what the virtual academy will look like so we can make an informed decision? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see a Michelle Cook. Michelle?
Unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, so my concern is also for making a decision about whether to engage in the hybrid in person. Um, I guess I should have said, sorry, that I I live on Woodcrest and my son is going to be a fourth grader um at Northwood Elementary. Um, and so my concern is is that I feel like a lot of my questions have been answered. Um, I'm really appreciative of the detail that was presented tonight. But for me, the really the rubber hits the road on the social distancing. And I didn't hear that there would be a guarantee of at least a minimum of six feet of distance between students. And quite frankly, it seems like the plan relies upon a a number of uh families to opt into the academy to achieve that. Um, so it makes it difficult to make a decision not knowing that piece. Um, and also with the virtual academy, you know, choosing the virtual academy does not necessarily mean that a family doesn't want to be involved with the school that their child has been going to. Um, you know, our children have uh have uh ties to that school and and uh, you know, people that they rely on. And um, I was a bit concerned that it be its own separate school without any tie to the, you know, the school that my child is familiar with. Um, and also that there's not any information right now about which product is being used for the curriculum. It was clearly stated that Canvas was going to be used for as large running management system for the um hybrid in person. Um, but uh, we haven't been given an indication of what would be used for the curriculum if we were to um choose the virtual academy. So I I think there's a lot of questions surrounding that that uh many parents would want cleared up before they could make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will make sure and address those concerns, Mr. Brinker, um like and clarify um the questions she's presented regarding the virtual academy.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzpatrick. I see a Nora Mullen.
Uh, there we go. Um, I am Nora Mullen. I am the parent of a rising second and fourth grader at Northwood. Um, we live on Edgewood. I don't know that that's necessary, but again, I'm calling, I'm questioning this whole virtual academy thing. Your social distancing requirements for the elementary school rely on a number of students choosing this option as far as I can tell. And we don't know what it is. I I don't understand how you think we can make a decision less than a month before school starts without this information. And when are we going to get it? What's the date? Are we going to have it Monday? Like, then why doesn't this meeting include the information? So I just think it's a real rough spot to put our kids in when we have to make a decision with no information. Thanks.
Thank you. We will get you that information. Thank you. I see a Ricardo Ricardo Codilo. Yes.
Hello.
Hey, Ricardo.
Hi, good evening. Uh, address is 2317 Star. I was interested in the kind of social distancing protections there were for sports and music groups, which appear to be meeting in person, and are these students meeting indoors? Thank you.
Thank you, Ricardo. We'll get that to you. And just for reference, my son on the other side of the screen heard your name and said hi. I see moving down, I see a Supressa Mufafi.
Hi, um, my daughter will be going to first grade at Upton. I live on Soya. Um, I also would like more details on the virtual academy. Is it live instruction or a first grader? How many hours are they on the computer? That kind of thing. Um, also, I'm kind of curious, you know, the governor's thing on masks said no masks in the classroom for K to five was their recommendation. I'm curious why you guys are saying from K up, everyone wore masks the whole time. And the other question I had is, maybe I missed it somewhere in the presentation. Um, do the elementary kids get gym and music class? I know they said something about like the those teachers coming into their classroom and rotating. But I I just don't see how gym would be done in a classroom. And if so, are there masks required for that? And same with music. Oh, and one more thing, the um, the somebody asked about the stuff you guys are disinfecting with. And the answer, I I'd be really curious what the actual product is. I know you, uh, somebody mentioned it was FDA and EPA approved to kill whatever coronavirus or any virus, but um it it wasn't answered as far as safe for kids and when and or if it will be used during school hours. That's my concern too, especially with a young child.
Thank you very much. I see a Tori McIntosh.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Tori McIntosh. I am a parent at Northwood. I live on Lloyd Avenue. I have two questions. One is regarding technology for remote learning. I have a son who was in DK last year and we found it very difficult to navigate Seesaw using the Chromebook. And I got the impression that iPads are also available for the district. So I was wondering if that's something that you might want to consider for kids that are working through kindergarten and maybe even first grade, that a tablet device might be easier for them to use than the Chromebooks. And secondly, I also is deaf and I know there are multiple deaf and hard of hearing children in the district. So thinking about wearing masks and the reliance that many of these students have on lip reading, I hope that that's something that you consider for the staff and also the students in the classroom so they can interact with their classmates. Thank you.
Thank you, Tori. Vanessa Schultz.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Good. Um, so thank you ever so much for the vast amount of information that has been presented. Um, a lot of the questions that I had have been answered. Um, but one that hasn't is the fact that I I actually work at Oakland Elementary. Um, and I have a student that's a high schooler. So I've had a lot of people in my neighborhood asking me what's going to happen if we start school and things are still not completed at the building. That's it. That's my question.
Gotcha. We will get that answer to you. Um. The whole, again, construction put us a little bit behind, but we'll get it. That's the key. Okay, we're going to go back up to the top. Um. I see an Allison Lewis. Hello, Allison.
I think she's there. We kept uh unmuting each other. I would unmute her and she's muted back.
Allison, can you hear us? Jason, are you unmuting her or is she unmuting herself?
She's got the controls on mute herself now.
Gotcha. Allison, we can't hear anything if you are speaking. I see you're unmuted, but I can't see. We don't hear anything. So we're going to skip down. We'll keep moving on and we'll reach back and perhaps we'll get this worked out. I see an Amy Brown. Amy, can you hear us? Okay, I just lost Amy Brown. Okay, moving down the list. I see a Bonnie McDonough.
Yes.
Hi, Bonnie.
Hello.
Hello. We can hear you.
Okay, good. Uh, this is Bonnie McDonough uh on Hawthorne and Royal Oak. And I have a middle school and a high school student. But wonderful job on the pre- presentation, um answered the majority of my questions. Um, one of the questions I have or suggestions is to um include more include some detail in regards to what the elective classes will look like in the different phases. Um, and my question is specifically on band and what kind of um, you know, what that's going to look like in uh phase four hybrid model as well as what those electives look like if if the choice to take the virtual virtual academy is chosen. Um, so so that's one of my questions, what those look like. And then also, um, if uh if your child chooses the virtual academy on and is in band, is there any opportunity for them to participate if school is in session? Um, and one more quest or two more questions. Virtual Academy, um, more detail in regards to whether it's self-paced, whether the kids have to be online at certain specific times to receive instruction. Um, and just kind of a little bit more detail on what the virtual academy's uh routine or structure is. Um, my last question is, um, what kind of support or plan do you have for those that choose virtual academy and are transitioning back into a middle school or a high school class in the second semester? What kind of um, you know, plans do you have to be able for them to smoothly transbit transition back into a in-school um format in that second semester, assuming that we are in this hybrid mode or or fully in-school at that time? Okay, so those are my questions.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yep, you're welcome.
See Deborah Morales.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
First of all, I'd like to say I really appreciate all of the effort that everyone has put into this, given it's an impossible situation and there is no best answer to anything. Um, I would very much like to thank Mary Ann Van Heitzma for all of her questions regarding the social workers in the district and what kind of social emotional help will be available to students. I am a resident of Claussen, but a former longtime resident of Royal Oak. I have three children in the district through schools of choice. And I I cannot underestimate the impact that all of this is having on our children and the fact that high school will be exclusively distance learning. I understand that, but I don't anticipate that they will reach out to social workers. So I would just like to reemphasize that those connections need to be initiated as much as possible by those in the district who have the ability to do to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see a Jennifer Kolokowski.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Um, so yeah, I'm Jenny Kolokowski. Um, I live on Royal Island Avenue and I'm a parent of two elementary school students at Adams. Um, just first of all, thank you guys for this hard work and this presentation. It was very impressive. Um, I just want to commend the work groups uh on their recommendations, especially where their recommendations exceeded the government's or the governor's requirements, um specifically around strategies for social distancing and universal masking. I know in our current uh context, those probably were not easy recommendations to give. Um, but I think that they show brave and strong leadership, so I'm really proud of Royal Oak right now. Um, and also as a healthcare provider and a clinical psychologist myself, I also would like to say thank you to that work group and to Mary Ann specifically um just around those considerations for mental health. Um, I just can't stress what I'm currently seeing in my practice and what we all know is going to be the second pandemic that we're all going to face. And so our district will definitely need um the help of, you know, both psychologists and uh social workers to help our our students and families. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. I see a Maddie Deering.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, my name is Maddie Deering. I actually live in Hazel.
I actually live in Hazel Park and my son is enrolled at Oak Ridge. He's going into first grade as a schools of choice student. Relates to my question, if we choose to enroll our schools of choice students in the Virtual Academy for at least the first semester or possibly the whole year, if when he does make the return to in-person learning, if we will have any trouble or have to reapply to get back to his home school of Oak Ridge? You know, we don't want to have to, if that's a factor, you know, that's going to factor into my decision, because we don't want to have to shuffle them around to a different school once, you know, we've gone kindergarten in one school, virtual for, you know, first grade or kindergarten or first grade, yeah, and then to another school for seventh grade. So, I'd just be curious to know what that will look like when we do make the transition back to in-person. Thank you.
Mr. Brinker, I will make sure we clarify any of those questions around pupil accounting. So, students who are school of choice or resident and then in and out of the virtual program and how that's assigned to an individual building or to the district level for programming that I refer to, because I want to make sure that's clarified. So, that's a specific note for me.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Smith, let's try Allison Lewis again.
Hello, can you hear me?
Now, we can.
Yay, I called in through my phone, sorry about the first time. And actually, my question is from Leslie Walsh, who also had issues earlier. So, we both have first graders going into Oak Ridge, but I live on Red Run Court and Royal Oak. So, we wanted to ask what the plan is for testing teachers and the procedure for disclosure of families who test positive or who have been in contact with those who have. Also, how does it work for kids who test positive or families test positive and closing classes? So, if you have a first grader that is symptomatic, does their class close down? What if they have a sibling in fourth grade? Does that class or grade close down? And how does that communication work to all of the families? And then, I guess our second question would be for temperature scanning, if that is planned at drop-off? And do we wait until the temperature's scanned? If that's even going to be something that you do for teachers and for the students every day at the drop-off?
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Smith, I believe we hit all of the people on this list.
The only one I am seeing maybe is Heather Lewis. I can't recall if we got her or not, she's not on my list that I've been gotten down as we went through.
Well, then, let's see.
Hello, can you hear me?
Now, we can hear you, yes.
Wonderful, thanks for looking back to me. My name's Heather Lewis. I live on Claussen Avenue in Royal Oak and I have kids at Adams and Rom. First of all, I want to say that I'm just absolutely blown away by the hard work put in by these committees. At my job, I've been on the Back to Work Committee and that was a lot of work and we didn't cover a fraction of what all of you did. I came onto this call, maybe expecting maybe not the best of news. And I am, feel so much better having listened to everything everyone in the district has done to inform us and to protect our kids and to protect our staff. I understand this is a work in progress, that everything is constantly changing, but based upon the incredible work that all of you have done, I have great confidence in all of you making the right decisions from this point on. I do want to say, as far as when we're talking about options for in-person or hybrid, even if hybrid only lasts a few weeks, it's critical to my children. They miss their friends. They miss the interactions. We have socially distanced, we have done everything we're supposed to do. And I have two very social children. If we can go back to school even partially and still be safe, that the impact that will have on their emotional health, I can't even explain what an impact that would have. I also thank all the people that have put in questions so far. I have to specifically say, like Jenny Kolokowski, I 100% agree with what she does or what she said. I'm an attorney that works in the mental health field and I agree with a great deal of what Jenny had to say. I also want to say, as far as the elementary goes, I am so happy that you are looking into a new program. CSO is horrific. We have had nothing but tears and frustration from CSO. 75% of the time was spent making text boxes and opening windows as opposed to actual learning. So, I'm very happy to hear that that hopefully won't be what we see in the future. And I just finally, to wrap it up, I want to remind all of you that with COVID, a lot of us parents are fortunate enough to be completely working from home, having a lot more flexible schedules. And a lot of us are here to help. So, don't hesitate to call on us, especially when things are virtual. There's so much we can do, so please don't hesitate to reach out to the parents in every way that you can think of. We appreciate everything you've done and we're happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. So, let me scroll through the list one more time, just to make sure.
Did we get to an Amy Brown?
Yes.
We did.
Kelly Waterston. I think that's everyone. Mr. Smith, do you see anyone, any others? Mr. Brinker.
Make it kind of real quick, just for anybody that's still watching. Who should people contact if they have questions? When they send these questions to our website? Are we going to have, what type of contact, their building administration?
We used a format with an online survey for asking questions. What we could do is redeploy that as like an ongoing question and answer.
That would be a really good idea.
Yeah, we could, I'll work on that with Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. There was one other one that I see that's a Christine Utter.
I just want to make the comment, I have two students in the high school this year, a senior and a sophomore. And I'm very concerned about only online learning. Our experiences from the end of last year were very poor. The kids sometimes would only put in about 10 minutes of work and be done. So, I think their education was not so valuable at the end of last year. And I do not feel that they are prepared for this year, especially with math. So, I'm very concerned. I mean, we're going to virtual again. We're also concerned for my senior, the world right now, in our reality, is it based on this, you know, academic performance, athletic performance, extracurricular performance, for how they're going to, you know, the campus scores and scholarships they're going to have starting off the year virtually, you know, gives our seniors unfair disadvantage that they will not be able to get the extracurricular benefits and education that they need to be competitive, because the world isn't going to stop and say, oh, hey, you, you know, we're, a senior during the COVID pandemic, so we'll give you a pass this time. So, concerned about the kid's future. I understand, you know, the pandemic and the virus and everyone's concerned about safety and I appreciate that, that there needs to be a holistic look at this as well, to the future opportunities are also taken into consideration. Thanks for taking my comments.
Thank you. I see another, I see Drumright. Hello, Sarah?
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, my just question is, if your child is having trouble and they were tested and we have all of the paperwork, all of that stuff, how will this affect continuing to get the IEP or the 504 or whatever in place so that we can help our child? Because, to be honest, this virtual learning was just not, not easy the last few months. And I understand that it was chaos and craziness. However, I'm concerned going back to school, that, I'm not going to lie, you teachers are absolutely amazing and I cannot do it. Like, to be completely honest with you, I don't know how I will continue this with one of my children. But, so I need some extra help. But if there is not a, even though she was tested and we have paperwork, we have all of that stuff and it has been turned in, how are we going to go forward to get that extra help when nothing has been completely set into place yet?
I will make sure her questions are followed up on Mr. Brinker directly with her child's situation in mind.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzpatrick, and thank you, Sarah. Scrolling up, I see Lisa Lean Haynes, excuse me.
Yes, hi, it's Alin, you're very close. No worries. One question that someone else just brought up, so it made me think, and I live in Royal Oak, I'm North Blair, that I have a sophomore and a senior coming into this new year at the high school. And the virtual learning, yes, in the spring, was not great. Sometimes the kids were barely getting work assigned or whatnot, just hoping that the virtual plan going in the fall is much more robust than what we had in the spring, because I think the way that it was done in the spring really impacted also AP testing. The kids didn't have all the information they needed, they didn't feel like they were as prepared. You know, for those of us that have seniors coming up, we have colleges and more APT testing, so we want to make sure. I'm just hoping it's not like it was before, where it was like, I guess I'm just wondering, is it going to be virtual, like where the teachers are, hi, everyone, and everyone gets on and they're actually teaching lesson plans? Or is it going to be some of the same stuff we had in the spring? Thank you.
Thank you. So, scrolling back up, we'll do it one more time. Do we see any new?
Michelle Cook, Mr. Brinker, did we have her?
Yes, she has a fourth grader at Northwood. So, we did catch her.
I see a Leslie Walsh.
Yep, let's.
Got her.
And Jennifer Rossback is on as well.
Yep, that's the new one.
So, Jennifer, we don't have, so let's get Jennifer on.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you again for all the hard work that everyone has put into these plans. I have two children, I'm actually in Royal Oak off of Sheffield. I have a high schooler and a middle schooler. And I just want to echo one of the previous commenters about the social aspects of the virtual learning, if it's a fully virtual experience this fall, especially with my senior in high school. Last fall or last summer, spring was very challenging mentally and physically from this disruption in their lives. I didn't realize how, how the, the social aspects of school really do help my individual sons do better in school. And they appreciate the discussions, the teachings of the teachers and the interactions that they get with their peers. So, I'm hoping for a hybrid situation in the fall, knowing full well that it may be fully virtual. Secondly, I don't know how much has been discussed about the IB diploma program and wondering how this will affect all of that. So, I think there were some discussions, but I don't know how, how much detail is available with regards to the phases and how we're going to go through. So, thank you and I appreciate all the work you've all done.
Thank you so much. I see an Amy Brown.
Hi, can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry about the first glitch. I have specific questions related to, I am an elementary teacher of 10 years, so I will not be sending my children into schools. I know what that task will look like as an elementary teacher, the safety that will not be accomplished by, you know, one individual in a room watching all of those kids at one time. So, my question is with both my husband, and I have a few questions, both my husband and I working during the day, my children attending the Virtual Academy, are there going to be accommodations for them? Because obviously, me being a teacher, I would prefer me sitting with my children while they're learning their coursework to help them versus grandma who, you know, doesn't have a clue about any of the stuff that's going on in education today. So, I would like for there to be some type of accommodations for children to, you know, complete this online coursework on their, during, you know, their time when they can. Another thing is, one of your panelists said that exposure to the virus is going to be inevitable. I believe it was one of the administrators that said it. So, my question is, how will you emotionally support those students who possibly expose their parents or teachers and may even get them sick or even end up hospitalized or worse? I don't even want to say it. Given that you only have four social workers in six elementary buildings. I have another question too. What specifically qualifies as having to quarantine? So, if one specials teacher comes, you, every, you know, elementary or even middle school student will see a specials teacher that day, that specials teacher will then see several other classes. So, if somebody in that specific class So if somebody in that specific class get tests positive, do all the rest of the classes who saw that special teacher have to quarantine? Do the siblings of the child who originally tested positive and the siblings classmates have to quarantine? When are they allowed to come back? Is it just 14 days? Is it three negative tests as, you know, some business practices are doing? There needs to be a lot more clear cut definitions on what is going to be the protocol. Because as you've already said, exposure is going to be inevitable. And my last question is, I do have a first grader and a middle, a student transitioning into the middle school. So if for some miracle, my child who is going to do virtual from, you know, the fall till January is able to transfer into the middle school because they were in phase five, how are you going to smooth over that transition when all the rest of the students would have potentially, you know, have been given extra guidance in the fall? And, you know, there's going to be a small cohort of kids possibly either going into middle school in January in sixth grade or even having their first year experienced in seventh grade. And quite frankly, I mean, I, I can't believe that, you know, you're proposing three different plans for each school. I feel like you're putting teachers' lives at risk and all the rest of the people that are working in that area. You know, parapros, lunch ladies, custodians, everybody. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Walsh. Hello.
Ah, perfect. Thank you. So yeah, Leslie Walsh, I live on Montrose. My son is going into first grade at Oak Ridge, hopefully in the fall. First of all, I just want to applaud everything that's been done. I appreciate that it's a completely Herculean effort. The first thing I want to call out is, I think what was missing in the past months was the attention to socialization. I know that, that my son's class had one, had one Zoom meeting. If I compare that to other school districts, it was, you know, they had table Zoom lessons and so on. So I think that, that socialization is important. The details, the second thing, the details around testing. What's going to be the protocol for temperature checks for kids going into school? What's going to be the protocol for teachers being tested, for kids being tested? What's the guidelines around disclosure? If somebody has a family member who's positive, how does that work disclosure wise? If they've got a sibling who's in an older class in the school, how does that work? It would be, it would be useful to have some information around that. And I think that the second thing is that, obviously, my son was a kinder this year. And one of the things that he really bonded with was his teacher. And I would, I would call out Mrs. Rybicki at Oak Ridge. She, she did an awesome job of, you know, bonding with him and the other kids. And I would like to know what the, what the plan is to have those kids bond with their first grade teacher? Or, you know, kids who are going to subsequent grades, you know, do they get to meet them on a Zoom? Do they get to see them in a socially distant kind of face to face environment? Just so that they have that bond. Because what I, what I feel like my son is missing and I think others do as well, is that physical interaction and that kind of human component to bonding with people. I would just like to understand how that's going to work. But, but hats off to everyone. I know that this is a massive, massive job and I don't envy anybody's task in, in what you're trying to achieve.
Thank you very much. With that, I see no other hands raised, so we will close public comment. And so now that'll move us to other. Does any of the board members have any other final comments or any other comments for the good of the group? Mrs. Anderson?
I just want to know, so what's next?
So we plan to summarize, as I said, the presentation from tonight as best we can. And then clearly identify the choices and the direction the board has given us tonight for proceeding, which would then be published as our district plan. At the same time, we want to honor all the questions that have been asked and give as much information as possible as a follow up with that FAQ. So I would anticipate tomorrow will be most of the day spent on finalizing our plans, making sure our PowerPoint is up to date so that it's clear what was considered, but then exactly what was selected and what we're moving forward with as our plan. I will work with our administrative leaders that you heard from tonight. And then the promotion of that, the communication of that plan out to families as well as additional lines for asking, clarifying questions and follow up questions to today, both from our speakers and from the surveys that we had conducted before. So I would say in the next two days, it's going to be revealing our plan and settling on communicating the decisions that have been made tonight as well as, you know, just a lot more clarification and some of the commonly raised issues regarding the virtual school and what that looks like. We would only want parents to make that decision over a period of time with as much information as possible. That's a big decision to make and we do want them as informed as possible. So that will be another big piece of our work in terms of, we don't just want parents to indicate if they're interested. We were hopeful at this point as close to the school year that parents have enough information to actually make an informed choice. So those are two big takeaways, I think, to answer your question, Ms. Anderson, about what's next.
Mr. Briggs?
Yeah, real, real quick, Mary Beth. Another thing I'd like to see is any anticipated staffing increases or changes that we're going to need for this anticipated new, I think would be helpful for the board also.
Okay.
Mrs. Dan Heitzma.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick, when will the presentation tonight be available for others to watch that were able to join us this evening?
Probably end of the day tomorrow because we will want it updated. You know, if you haven't been on this call for the hours with us and hearing answers and responses, sometimes the slides won't speak for themselves. So based on feedback and the amount of questions and then questions that you as a board have asked, I would want to update those slides to, to be sure it's clear, the direction that we're taking. So probably by the end of the day tomorrow, if not first thing Friday morning. And then in addition to that, I see a companion document that would clarify exactly what our decisions are and what our temp plan looks like, just so you're not weeding through the 73 slides of information to find out what the plans are. So we'll put that in a couple of different formats.
For clarification, this, this particular meeting is being recorded and will be available for folks.
Sure.
Valuable conversation for people to have, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I guess a huge thank you to the parents that hung in with us all this time as well. And I know it's, it's challenging. A big thank you again to everybody. But I know it's challenging as we've watched, you know, watched college plans change daily pretty much. And so I know it's a bit challenging for everybody, but thank you very much. And, and the other question too, so we'll submit our plan to the state, but that, that plan is also fluid. So if we acknowledge that we need to make some changes based upon what we've submitted, we can make those changes as well.
Thank you for that prompt. Our, the plan that we owe to the state is everything we're thinking of in all of the different phases. The state is not interested in just our final decision and how we're moving forward. We owe several layers of plans, as I've been saying all along, to the, to the state and in response to that document. We also know that that document could be cumbersome and may not be in the friendliest of forms. And so that's why we're looking at another graphic or another way to communicate our actual plans versus our assurances to the state that we've met all of the guidelines or exceeded the guidelines that are presented to us. So there'll be a lot of information coming out and we'll want it to be as, as clear as we can to families of exactly what we're doing moving forward. I will, will work with the administrative team to fill in all of the mandatory questions being asked by the state and make sure that the Royal Oak Schools Plan is submitted on time, vetted by the county and then made available to the state.
Any other questions? So we have a facilities and finance meeting posted for next week, which we normally do. Are there any actions related to this plan that we need to take as a board that we would have to take perhaps at that meeting?
It is, it's possible that, I would like to reserve the option to add just return to school plans as part of the financing facility agenda in general. And then I will ask that question of our administrative team to make sure anything that needs to be in front of the board in a timely manner would be able to be added to that agenda. So I would anticipate some follow up from questions from tonight to be on the financing facility meeting, which is next week, Thursday. And we will make sure that in that meeting is posted on our website, just like tonight's was. So that's a good point, Mr. Brinker.
And if not, we have the regular board meeting two weeks. So we'll just know the timing that we need to get it in.
Yeah, I will let you know.
If I could take just a minute, I know there's been a lot of things, but, you know, really, as a school superintendent and as an educational leader my entire career, I could not be more proud of a team that has put in effort and time and care. These are not easy decisions to make. And, you know, they've tried to look at every angle of every decision. And then at some point, we have to make those difficult decisions and make recommendations to you as a board and to our community. And so I want to thank my team. I do it all the time, but I want to thank them publicly for their, this tireless effort around this and just how much care and concern on their decisions, really keeping the students as the focus and supporting our staff through this process to also be safe as they teach and our students learn. So just from me, I, my sincerest thanks and appreciation for all the time.
Thank you very much. Any last comments from the board? I see none. With that, I appreciate all your efforts and we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye bye now.